Was provided?
Uh, yes it was.
Thank you. In that case, call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call.
Mayor Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hay.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Thank you. If you're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We get to start the afternoon with two fun proclamations.
Item 3.1, the day of October 26, 2019, as Rolling Hills Zoo Day in the city of Salina, Robert Jenkins, the Rolling Hills Zoo Executive Director, will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. It's my pleasure to present this proclamation for your consideration. Whereas the year 2019 is recognized as the 20th anniversary of Rolling Hills Zoo, our local zoological and conservation institution which develops educational living displays of the natural world for our citizens and for our visitors, and whereas this milestone in Rolling Hills Zoo's history underscores the importance of its impact in the cultivation of a healthy respect and concern for our natural world, and whereas the zoo is committed to serving our residents and visitors proudly, proficiently, diligently, and generously by improving and enhancing the quality of life in our community, and whereas the zoo annually contributes significantly to the economic well-being of the city of Salina since its opening through tourism and public events, and whereas, excuse me, the city of Salina continues to be fortunate and benefiting from the work performed by the zoo every day, particularly in its education and public programs and community involvement. Thou therefore be it resolved that Trent W. Davis, M.D., Mayor hereby formally recognizes the 20-year history of the Rolling Hills Zoo, its Board of Directors, professional staff, in advocating efficient, effective, responsive, and exemplary professional animal management and welfare, and its commitment to the conservation of the natural world by declaring the zoo's anniversary date of October 26, 2019, as Rolling Hills Zoo Day.
Thank you. I guess you always have special events going on out there. Is there anything more special?
Well, the only reason I'm here by myself is the rest of the staff is back getting ready because it's Saturday. It's coming. This Saturday is the 26th. So we're getting ready for everybody.
So we should fill up that parking lot.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And if I may, if I could swear the room to secrecy? I could try. But anyway, this morning was the first day that our tiger cubs were out in their exhibit. So I would expect them to be on display Saturday for everyone's enjoyment. And remember, that's a secret.
Probably just got 2,000 more kids to show.
There we go.
And I could give you this signed proclamation.
Congratulations.
We'll see you in five years.
As long as it's not as stuffed exhibit. And 3.2.
Item 3.2, the week of October 20 through the 26, 2019, as Friends of the Library Week in the city of Salina, Greta Kontis, Vice President of the Friends of the Salina Public Library, will read the proclamation.
Hello. Whereas, Friends of the Salina Public Library raise money that enables our library to move from good to great, providing the resources for additional programming, much-needed equipment support for children's and adult summer reading, scholarships for teen volunteers, and special events throughout the year. Whereas, the work of the Friends highlights the fact that our library is the cornerstone of the community, providing opportunities for all to engage in the joys of lifelong learning and connect the thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to the present. Whereas, the Friends understand the critical importance of a well-funded library and advocate to ensure that our library gets the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials, along with expert assistance in research, readers' advisories, and children's services. Whereas, the Friends' gift of their time and commitment to the library sets an example for all in how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community. Be it resolved that Trent Davis, M.D., Mayor proclaims October 20th to 26, 2019, as Friends of the Library Week in Salina, Kansas, and urges everyone to join the Friends and thank them for all they do to make our library and our community so much better.
Thank you. Are there special, again, it's a place that always has special activities.
Yes. The library always has something going on. Specifically, this week, the Friends, we have, this is our membership drive. It's the National Association's Membership, you know, Libraries Week also. So we're having Membership Week. People who join this week, and you can get an individual membership for just $10. It's good for the whole year, okay? You get not only two free books at the book sale this weekend, we're having our semi-annual book sale, used books. We have over 1,000 books and tapes. We have books on tape. We have CDs. So we have music also, movies. That's this Saturday, open to the public from 9:00 to 1:00, and on Sunday, $5 a bag, okay? So, but we would encourage all of you to become Friends of the, become members of the Friends. We do good work.
Well, the mayor gets to sit on the library board and...
So you know we do good work.
I knew you did good work. I didn't know how much good work that you did. And if you don't mind sharing that podium, don't leave. I don't know if everyone here knows our...
Oh, yes.
Do you like to be, not really the head library, you're the director of the libraries.
Yes.
Probably, Melanie, come on up and you can let folks know who you are.
I'm Melanie Hedgepath. I'm the Director of the library. And the Friends provide us all kinds of extra support throughout the year and let us do a lot of great things, especially for the kids during the summer, to help with their summer learning. So we're definitely behind them on their proclamation.
Thank you. Thank you. And September was library card month?
The library card signup month, yes.
I got mine September 30th.
All right.
I won't ask folks in here to raise your hand if you, raise your hand if you do have a library card.
Or nobody knows you don't.
That's right. That's right. We won't tell. That's pretty good. Here is a signed cop, well, not a copy, it's a signed proclamation.
Thank you.
So you guys get your Friends to the Library membership this week?
Absolutely.
Yes.
You've got us on record now.
Thank you.
Going back over now, signing up new members.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move to Citizens Forum. It's an opportunity for anyone who would like to address the Commission on any item that's not on the agenda. We just ask that you limit your comments to five minutes.
Deborah Corrales, I was here a few weeks ago, and a couple people pointed out that I didn't make myself very clear on the dogs that I was talking about. Everybody has heard about Michael Vick's pit bull fighting dogs. Hello? Thank you. They were taken from him in 2007. Some of them fought. Some of them were bait dogs, and some of them he just drowned or beat. Four that I have found became therapy dogs for children, terminally ill people, and just general good dogs. I do have some pamphlets I'd like to give you. Mayor, can I bring them up?
Please.
And those are pictures of some of his dogs.
Thank you.
The first thing that's on top is when Hector, the therapy dog, died. A letter from his brother describing the horrific treatment they all received.
If you have one more copy, could you give one to the clerk?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So right here are some of his dogs. This is Hector, therapy dog. Handsome Dan, who had not become a therapy dog, but he loved children. Johnny Justice became a terminally ill-for-ch children therapy dog, and so did Hector. These are some of my personal pit bulls that I've had, and not pit bulls, I'm not breed-specific. This little guy I rescued, he was born with a deformed leg. His name became Pop Scotch. He died unfortunately after he ate a lot of ibuprofen. These are three pit bulls that I fostered for the Salina Animal Shelter. Here's Domo, grown up. That's my personal dog with his girlfriend, Lake Sea. These dogs aren't inherently cruel. They aren't inherently mean. They do become mean with the people that handle them. Those are the people that need to be held accountable, not the dogs. If Vick's fighting dogs can be therapy dogs, a lot of them, if you read those, became good canine citizens, certificate recipients. They're not bad dogs. They're not inherently dangerous. People, however, are. This is what happens to these dogs. Now, this dog here isn't a pit bull, but she was at our shelter. You can see her legs, and inside this skeleton of a dog was four puppies. And it angers me that bad people do this, and good people supposedly like us ban them because we do just as much harm to these dogs as Vick's did by banning them. For me, this is the worst-case scenario. This little girl was put on a barbecue grill, and when the man found her walking in the middle of nowhere, her tail was wagging when she saw him. The only thing inherently mean is us. These dogs don't have a choice. We do. And to continue with the ban on these dogs based on the way they look is an injustice to humans. I was, Peanut was adopted from the animal shelter. That's him in the angel outfit that the animal shelter wanted him in. I wanted him in a jail costume. There's him in a baby swing at the park, which he did till he was 85 pounds and I couldn't pick him up anymore. I was labeled a criminal. My dog had to wear a green collar. I had to keep him on a four-foot leash even in my own backyard. I had to have 150, on a four-month-old puppy, I had to have $150,000 life insurance or injury insurance or whatever it's called. And that's not fair because he hadn't done anything. I had to sign a document stating that I knew my dog was of a dangerous breed. I came here and I said, "What happens if I don't sign this because I don't believe it?" "We take your dog," is what they told me. "You take my dog because I don't agree with you?" "Yeah." So I signed it. This ban is not good for us. It's not good for the dogs, and it needs to change. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to come up?
May I ask one quick question of staff to follow up on Ms. Corrales? Can you refresh my memory on when we're going to be taking a look at the breed-specific legislation?
Yeah, I know I've kind of speculated on some dates. In all honesty, we have a rough draft from Animal Services staff, and City Manager's Office is trying to go through that, and we're generating quite a bit of follow-up and homework for Animal Services staff before we're ready to bring it to you. So I still think we're a couple weeks or more out.
Hello again. My name's Tanya Carrer. I have a question for you, Mayor Trent Davis. Have you received anything from Anthony Mays with the Federal Housing Equal Opportunity Department due to the complaint that they're serving y'all regarding the errors? No, I'm just, I'm not going to say a whole lot. I just need to know if y'all have received that document.
Actually, we have. It came to, our Human Relations Commission typically conducts those type of investigations and conciliations on behalf of HUD. So we notified them that we have a conflict of interest when it involves the city of Salina. They then erroneously, in my opinion, sent us notice that our own department would be conducting the investigation. So we've tried to clarify with them that in light of our conflict, they're going to need to assign that to someone else, and we're waiting for confirmation that they've done so.
Okay. Because here is what May, I keep wanting to call him Theo. His name is Anthony May, and he left me a message, let me know, and that was a good two weeks ago, that he goes, he was a little confused. He said, "The city of Salina is pursuing this, so if I don't hear back from them within a few days to let him know." Well, it's been two weeks, and I've heard nothing other than the public record that I request on both Charlotte and Capone. So...
Yeah. When he says the city of Salina is pursuing it, I think, I think he, what he's assuming is that we're investigating it. What we need to advise them is it's a conflict for us to investigate it.
Exactly.
And it needs to be assigned to someone else.
We received our official notice. Sorry, I'm a little low on voice. And we have 30 days to respond. We responded within three or four via written response.
Okay.
To HUD, letting them know we have a conflict of interest. And it was provided to us as courtesy. So when they receive those state, or those federal claims, they look and see, is there a FAP or Federal Housing Processing Agency, which we are
Right.
within the district, and offer that to us just as customary because we're that representative agency. And so we have formally informed them we have a conflict of interest. So then they should take the case up.
Okay. All right. Thank you guys, you all for verifying that. I'll be contacting him within the next couple days so I can get an update and see where we're at on that. Thank you. That's all I have to say right now.
All right. Anyone else? All right, we will move to public hearing, 5.1.
Item 5.1, public hearing to consider adoption of Resolution Number 19-7752, declaring a certain structure located at 236 South 4th Street to be unsafe and dangerous, directing that the structure shall be repaired or removed, and establishing a reasonable amount of time within which the repair or removal of such structure shall commence and be completed.
Mr. Pilcher.
Good afternoon. Sean Pilcher, building official for the city of Salina. A little bit of background on the dangerous structures process before I get into my request for condemnation part. Division of Building Services is responsible for ensuring that the property in the city of Salina meets various building and property maintenance codes and does not pose a risk to the general public. To meet this goal, staff responds to citizen complaints as well as staff-initiated inspections regarding structures that appear to be, present a danger to the public. In, an inspection of the property is completed using criteria listed in Chapter 31 of the Salina Municipal Code entitled Property Maintenance. Staff attempts to work with property owners to achieve code compliance. Frequently, owners complete the required improvements or demolition, and the structure is removed from the dangerous structure category. In some cases, insufficient or no improvements are made to the property, and proceedings must be initiated pursuant to KSA 12-1750, which provides the authority for cities to require repair or removal of such structures by complying with the applicable statutory procedures. These procedures, as they relate to the structure at issue and the proposed demolition, or, excuse me, the proposed resolution, are summarized as follows. Number one, upon receipt of a written statement from the building official advising that a structure is unsafe or dangerous, the city commission shall by resolution schedule a public hearing, which the time interested parties may appear and show cause as to why the structure should not be condemned and ordered, repaired, or demolished pursuant to applicable law. On September 9, 2019, the city commission adopted Resolution Number 19-7737, which scheduled the public hearing for today, October 21, 2019. Resolution setting the public hearing must be published for two consecutive weeks on the same day of the week, at least 30 days prior to the public hearings. In this case, the publication in the Salina Journal occurred September 13th and 20th, and attached is the affidavit showing that it was in there. Number three, a copy of the resolution must be mailed by certified mail to the property owners or other identified interested parties. These mailings were completed on September, September 13, 2019. City Commission, number four, the city commission must conduct the public hearing for the purpose of hearing evidence submitted by the city's building official, the owners, owner's agent, lien holders of record, and any occupants of the properties as to whether the structures are unsafe or dangerous. Upon closing of the hearing, the city commission shall determine whether or not the structure is unsafe or dangerous. If a structure is determined to be unsafe or dangerous, the city commission shall adopt a resolution directing that it must be repaired, removed, or demolished, and the premises made safe and secure. The resolution must be published in the city's official newspaper and a copy mailed to the owners and interested parties, identified parties of interest. Number five, resolution for the structure determined to be unsafe or dangerous shall fix a reasonable time in which repairs or demolition of the structure shall be commenced and completed, and state that the, that if the owner fails to commence repair or removal of substructure, or fails to diligently prosecute the same, until the work is complete, the city will cause the structure to be repaired or demolished. In the event that the city, it is necessary for the city to repair or demolish the structure, state law provides that a process by which the city sell, city may sell any salvage from the structure and apply the proceeds against the city's incurred costs, including costs of publication and postage. Further, the city must keep account of the costs in excess of the salvage and provide notice to the owner that such costs must be paid within 30 days of notification. Number seven, in the event that the owner fails to make payment and salvage value is insufficient to reimburse the city's costs, payment is pursued by making special assessment against the land and where the structures are located. The city may also bring action against the owners in district court for payment of personal debt if the amount remains unpaid. Kansas statutes provide that the process by which the cities can finance unpaid costs through general fund or by issuance of no-fund warrants. Okay. The public hearing is to determine whether or not the structure is unsafe or dangerous is a quasi-judicial proceeding because the city commission will be investigating facts, hearing evidence, drawing conclusions, and taking official actions that affect individual property owners and other interested parties. In quasi-judicial proceedings, interested parties must have an opportunity to present and rebut evidence in a tribunal that is impartial to the matter. Accordingly, in advance of the hearing, city staff has provided to the property owners, if requested by the property owners, copies of the building official's evidence relating to the unsafe and dangerous status of their respective properties. Notably, to ensure procedural fairness, the building official's evidence is not enclosed with this staff report, and the building official's evidence will be presented to the city commission for the first time during the public hearing. I'm guessing you guys got those passed out to you. Did we get those to them? Okay. I thought that we handed those to you. This property has been purchased from the owner in possession at the time of the public hearing, that, at the time the public hearing was set. The new owner has obtained a permit and is diligently pursuing corrective action to get the repairs listed in the building official's report made. City staff is optimistic that the repairs can be completed so that the city does not have to demolish the structure. City staff is continuing with this process since the public hearing date was set, and doing so preserves the city's options if it becomes necessary to proceed with enforcement. The Salina Municipal Code, Sections 3178, anticipates that the sale of a property can occur while the property is in violation of city ordinance, and requires that the seller either to make the repairs themselves or fully disclose the buyer all deficiencies with the property in question. In compliance with this section, city staff has ensured that the buyer has been provided with all pertinent documentation relating to the violation notices that have been sent to the original owner. And then printed further down here is, is the code section that, that backs that previous statement up. I won't read through that one, but that's what, that's the code citation for that. Fiscal note, as of October 21, 2019, the costs incurred by the city related to the subject property have been related to investigation, research, site inspection, title report, document preparation, publication, certified mailings, and legal counsel. If the city commission takes action to order abatement and the owners do not comply within the specified time period, the city will incur costs to contract for demolition or repair of the structure. If remediation or demolition becomes necessary at the city expense, at the city's expense, the city has funds from the insurance proceeds from the fire that occurred in the amount of $8,430. If the city's cost to remediate the structure exceed that amount, the property owner will be billed for the remainder of the expenses, and that amount will be due and payable within 30 days. If the property owner does not pay the bill amount within 30 days, the amount will be assessed to the property upon request of the Finance Department and approval by the city commission. The amount due will become property tax assessment, payable to the Saline County Treasurer, and ultimately reimburse the city if paid. If the property owner does not pay the assessment, then the property owner, then the property taxes and/or assessments become delinquent and subject to further action by Saline County, including possible tax sale of the property. At the conclusion of myself, of the statements by myself and other interested parties, staff has identified the following alternatives for city commission consideration. Number one, approve Resolution Number 17, or, excuse me, 19-7752, finding that the structure at 236 South 4th Street is unsafe or dangerous, directing that the structure be removed, repaired, uh, excuse me, repaired or moved, and the premises made safe and secure, fixing a timeline of 60 days on or before December 20, 2019, within which the repair or removal shall be completed, and authorizing staff to proceed with demolition or repair if the owners fail to comply. Number two, approve Resolution 19-7752, as indicated in Option 1 above, fixing alternative times, reasonable times for commencement and completion, and authorizing staff to proceed with demolition or repair if the owners fail to comply. Number three, postpone consideration of Resolution 19-7752 to a specified date pending additional information needed as directed by the condition, or number four, decline to approve Resolution Number 19-7752 upon finding that the structure at 236 South 4th Street is not unsafe or dangerous. Okay. There's the procedure there, and now we'll move on to information that we have for building officials' requests for condemnation. A little bit of background here. The property was posted September 13, after, 2019, after the city commission passed the resolution to set the public hearing. Taxes on this property are current. Background for this, city building inspectors performed an inspection of the criteria listed in Section 31-502 of the Salina Municipal Code and the provisions of Section 31-502, excuse me, the provisions of Salina Municipal Code as well as the findings of the building official are provided. The reason this property became, came to the attention of the city is because of a fire that occurred on February of 2019. Following the fire, as is standard protocol, the Building Services Division contracted with the owner to address safety concerns and learn about how the building would be repaired and/or secured. At the time of the initial contract, the owner had no firm plans on how or when the work would be repaired. Two violation notices were sent. Neither of the, neither permits nor repair or any work of the property to clean up or maintain security were made. The property was then sold to John Ratliff on September, in September of 2019. Mr. Ratliff has obtained the necessary permit to make the needed repairs and has intention to complete the repair necessary to remove the structure from the dangerous structure designation. He also intends to perform other renovations and improvements to the property. As of October 9, 2019, Mr. Ratliff had made considerable progress on the needed, on the needed repairs, but has not completed all of the listed repair items related to the dangerous structure designation. items related to the dangerous structure designation. And we'll get to those here in just a minute in the conclusions section here. Items five, six, and seven from the required repair list are essential to the structural integrity of the building. If Mr. Ratsliff is able to complete items five, six, and seven, making the building structurally sound, then the structure's designation of dangerous could be removed. Staff feels that the other remaining items indicated in the repairs list can be addressed through the complete execution of the work as described in the building permit. Following table gives the timeline from the fire on February fourteenth to the present date. And you can go through here and see that the fire occurred on Valentine's Day, February fourteenth last year. Violation notice was sent. The house was vandalized in March of last year. Rear doors were damaged. Entry was gained at the property. Second notice was sent to talk about boarding up the property. The current property owner at that time didn't do anything about it, so the city had to board it up. On March twenty-fifth, city received insurance proceeds that I mentioned earlier, eight thousand four hundred and thirty dollars on March twenty-seventh. City Commission request for a public hearing was on August ninth. Change of ownership occurred September third, two thousand nineteen, to Mr. Ratsliff. He was given copies of the previous violation notices and the dangerous structure evaluation. Building permit was obtained by Mr. Ratsliff on September twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen. Had a drive-by inspection this morning. Didn't see a whole bunch of difference since the last time we were there. Conclusions, the building official has determined that the structure is unsafe and/or dangerous. The building official therefore requests that the governing body, one, make findings by resolution that the structure is unsafe or dangerous, two, direct the structure to be repaired or removed, and three, fix a reasonable time with repair or removal of the structure shall be completed, all pursuant to KSA twelve seventeen fifty. The following are required, are required repair items needed to fully address the safety procedures. Number one, the property is fire damaged to a point where fifty percent of the second floor area is uninhabitable. The remainder of the property has significant water damage from lightning and, excuse me, from fighting the fire. Building is abandoned and cannot be occupied in its current condition. Electric meter has been pulled and cannot be restored until the damage is either repaired or removed. And these last three items are the ones that he needs to get done to get it removed from dangerous structure list, as I said before. Items one through four can be addressed through completion of the building permit. There are openings on the rear of the roof of the house from the fire damage having not, have not been repaired. There is structural fire damage to wall studs, ceiling joists that have not been repaired, and the foundation will have, has holes and, has holes and portion of the foundation is leaning more than two inches from plumb. And if you can, you can go through the pictures there, and you can kind of see what I'm talking about in those pictures, about how it's, it's kind of wide open. A lot of, some of that is not, the fire damage, some of it's work that he's been doing to make repairs, so, you know, you can see the black portions where the fire damage occurred, but the rest of that is fire damage work that he's doing. So, with that, I can open up to, unless you have other questions of me, I can open up to other interested parties.
Just a few for you, maybe?
If I may, a couple of clarifications that might be helpful. Sean, you indicated the fire occurred on Valentine's Day last year, but the, the report has dates from this year, so just wanted to confirm.
Yeah, sorry, that is, no, it is. It was, it was this year, not last year. I meant, I said last year, but I was an error there. My apologies.
And then the staff report kind of touches on it, but just want to acknowledge that, you know, we, we're pleased and optimistic about the progress that Mr. Ratsliff has made on the property. So we actually, Sean came to me and asked, should we go forward with this or not? And we, number one, it'd already been advertised, so we had an obligation to at least conduct a public hearing. I think, as you know, more generally, not as an indication about Mr. Ratsliff and his progress at all, every dangerous structure seems to have its own story, whether it turns into a challenge, a request for an extension. So the thinking was, have every reason to believe that enforcement won't be necessary, but this would be an opportunity to go ahead and make the declaration and get a deadline on the calendar and, and with every hope that Mr. Ratsliff gets it repaired and it's a non-issue, but didn't want to take that, that option away from you and wanted to keep the process moving just so that it doesn't stall out like some others have in the past.
There's, there's three major items that have to be addressed to take it off the dangerous structure. My question is, and this may be something that Mr. Ratsliff can answer, is, is sixty days long enough? And if we go ahead and approve this with sixty days and he hasn't completed all of them, what's our ability to go in to extend that another thirty days or something?
We, historically, we've passed additional resolutions amending the first resolution kind of on a case-by-case basis, based on the specific, specifics of the circumstance. So I think you definitely could say, agree on a date that seems reasonable, and then if extenuating circumstances come up that cause you to think an extension's appropriate, we can prepare a resolution to extend the deadline.
Question.
One other, what's the significance of the eighty-four thirty? Was that a certain percentage of fire proceeds set a hole back in case a certain action had to be taken?
Yes, that's Kansas State Statute, I don't have the number in front of me, right in front of me, but every time there is a fire where the building is declared dangerous, well, actually even before it's declared dangerous, they send us a check of ten percent of the insurance proceeds in case action has to be taken by the city. And then we have to, we have so much time to return that money to the policyholder unless it is declared dangerous, and then we hang on to it, you know, until that process completes.
So, that's another question I had, I guess, because we talked about the eighty-four hundred, but I didn't know if there were other insurance proceeds if, because I'm, I'm guessing that our costs do not meet the eighty-four hundred dollars that we've received from the state. So does that go back to the new owner if he completes the project as?
It goes back to the original policyholder.
Why?
Because they're the ones that had the policy. We don't return it to Mr. Ratsliff, it gets returned to.
Should have put that in your contract.
That's to be contracted between the seller and the buyer in that circumstance.
Right.
And it's a minor detail, but state, as Mr. Pilcher described, state statute provides for that ten percent allocation for communities that actually elect to require that and codify that. So Salina has done that, and we're in, in position to, you know, have that in place. That's not just mandatorily the case across the state unless you opt in.
All right.
I've just got a couple of questions as well. Mr. Pilcher, are the items five, six, and seven that you referenced, are those also included in the building permit that is on file?
Yes, they are.
Okay, so.
Yeah, he'll be able to complete these repairs without obtaining additional permits.
Okay, great. And then, when were these photos taken?
These photos were taken on, I believe, October the ninth.
Okay, okay, I've just had some concerns about, it looks, you know, it looks pretty open and unsecured, and I didn't know if any progress had been, been made to, to secure the building a little bit better. And then, just wanted to confirm that Mr. Ratsliff is the, the property owner, because when I looked up on the parcel search, there wasn't a name referenced here. I didn't get that name. Now, maybe it was an error on my, on my part, but I didn't see, that's not the name that I saw associated with that property?
If you look, if you look a search on their, on their website, if that's how you did it, it does take a bit of time to get that updated, but if, if we go down to the office, they do have that, his ownership.
Great, thank you.
Good. Mr. Ratsliff?
Yeah, did you have any questions for me? I mean, I can.
Coming up to the podium there first, okay.
Thank you for taking the time for this today. The pictures, you know, I've been working my way from front to back, so I probably should have got the back secured first, but I'm only like probably the end of, end of this week to getting it secured. There's, there's been a little more work having to lift up the house and pour some pads and things like that.
I was going to ask about the, the foundation.
Yeah.
Works that's then taken care of?
Yeah, like that back picture, you'll see the opening hole that was taken care of today. The block was laid, it'll take me a couple of days to set it back on there. But there's been pads I've had to pour down in the basement. I also had to fill in the basement with some flow fill to make it more secure and things like that.
I don't want to get ahead of the commission, and it may not feel like it, but we appreciate your willingness to make this purchase and this investment and help resolve what could otherwise be blight, so.
Well, I thank you, Alfred. And I would request another sixty days. I don't believe I'll need that, but I don't want to come back in front of you again, just to be real honest.
So you think a total of one hundred and twenty?
Oh, I think, yeah, that'd be.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes, please.
What's?
Yeah, I guess I'm concerned, like, you could get it done in sixty days, or you need longer than sixty?
I can be off the naughty list in sixty days.
Like that, by Christmas.
Yes.
Which is good. Be off the naughty list.
Not completed, but have the three major.
Yeah, it'll, it'll definitely be secured by then siding on it, doors on it.
All right. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments from anyone in the public audience? I guess we'll close the hearing, bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor Davis, I move we approve Resolution number nineteen dash seven seven five-two, finding that the structure at two thirty-six South Fourth Street is unsafe or dangerous, directing that the structure be repaired and removed, and the premise be made safe and secure, fixing a time of sixty days, that being on or before December twentieth to not, two thousand nineteen, within which the repair or removal shall be completed and authorizing staff to proceed with the demolition or repair if the owners fail to comply.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution nineteen dash seven seven five-two. Any other comments, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five, nothing. Thank you. We can proceed to consent agenda. Mr. Ratsliff, thank you for coming. I hear your voice, but I just, it's all the bright lights. I'm sorry.
Item six point one, approve the minutes of October fourteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Well, I guess there's only one item to move. Thank you.
Second.
All right, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now that's what I call moving along. All righty, seven point one, and just so that we are all, there is a update at seven point one provided, thank you.
Just as a clarification, I think the clarification was offered when they're distributed, but I think it was Mayor Davis that pointed out that we had attachments and not correct, attached to the correct staff reports, and there's a reference to residential zoning when it should have been commercial zoning. So while they weren't all that significant, you should have a correctly worded and collated seven point one and seven point two.
All righty, seven point.
Item seven point one, Resolution number nineteen dash seven seven four-nine, providing for the advisability and authorization of a special improvement district for water, sanitary sewer, street, and drainage improvements in Nine South Edition, and authorizing the mayor to execute an improvement district development agreement between the City of Salina and Nine South Development LLC.
Mr. Stack, how you doing?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Yes, thanks for bearing with us on these. They're all going to be three, some kind of related, but of course, different parts of town, but related, and so, yes, we had frantically getting them all put together last week, fairly similar packets, but different, different dates and different attachments were the key. So we hope, we really, thank you for bearing with us on that, and we hope we got them all fixed Friday, and then I guess get to talk about them all today. This is the first one, Nine South, started with a replat, or a plat basically of the, basically some property on South Ninth, the old pumpkin patch. Been there for quite a while and has definitely a good commercial area. So this Nine South group came to the city and plotted that property, and that actually, the plat just got finalized on Friday, so it was signed, and it was finalized a few weeks before that, but getting all the signatures takes some time. Dean has to run those through and had to get, did get finally approved and filed on Friday. It's a four-lot plat, definitely a commercial subdivision or a commercial property. Quite a timeline there, I guess. Mike wanted us to kind of include the timelines, and it's, it is a little bit of an eye-opening experience from my perspective, because we, we see kind of the feasibility side, but we don't get involved quite as much on the plat side. It's some, but it's a long, it's somewhat of a long and arduous process, so we can definitely stand for questions on any of those dates and try to explain why some are shorter or longer than others. But the bottom line is, we're here today with a development agreement and a petition that was filed on Friday by Mr. Kurt Robertson. Our policy resolution that was eighteen seven five five six, set out the requirements for these review factors. So we did talk about this subdivision or this property on December seventeenth of last year, and we went through the many, the many review factors. When somebody submits an application and says what kind of property it's going to be, or the special is going to be, and how's it, what's the marketability, and some of the things that are part of that application, we talked about those almost a year ago, or about ten months ago, I guess. So then we've been working with Nine South since then with plans and estimates and plating and easements and subdivision drainage, and then, of course, attachment to Ninth Street. Some of the main unique things about this, it's a four-lot plat basically, but it's, it's got a sort of, a stormwater pond in the northeast corner that has to drain out to Ninth Street and connect to a drainage system. And then the old access that was on Ninth Street can be eliminated, basically. So there was a kind of a temporary access put in when Ninth, Ninth Street was constructed to get to the, it used to be the skating rink and the apartments that were there, and that can be now eliminated, and then the drainage can go through there. I guess, basically like it was planned to all along, but temporarily, it's temporary has been probably twenty years now since that's been here, so it's been, been a while. So the new access off Ninth Street will be for this subdivision, which is basically where the old driveway was for the property, the duly property. And then there'll be one more right in, right out, access off the road to the, to the south of that area. So I guess as far as a petition goes, this has been petitioned or submitted by Kurt Robertson as one of the managers or the partners at Nine South Edition, and basically represents a hundred percent of the property, so they're able to petition the city for a benefit district, and resolution explains the benefit district and the costs associated therewith, and petition, and then improvement district development agreement, whereas in this case, the developer has requested to, they will do the construction and admin, administration, well, construction, and they will hire the contractors to complete all the work, and then the development district agreement allows them to be reimbursed once they're done and everything's approved with, once the city sells the bonds for the benefit district. The unique thing about this property, I guess, there's a few unique things, but the Ninth, Ninth Street access, like I explained a little bit, is just, that's, that's some of the things that had to have to change, and at this point, it was something that we, the city would have done years ago, and so it's, it's outside the boundaries of the benefit district. So the city costs, that's actually going to be city at large funds, basically, for Ninth Street access and the old marketplace extension. There's a gap between this property and the actual extension. There's a fairly large drainage ditch that comes through there and an elevation change, and the only thing we can come up with, we looked at when that was built, why it wasn't built to the property line, just kind of the history of that, and the best, best we could come up with, it was just, it was, they ended it basically at the drainage ditch. It would have been either, you know, quite an elevation difference, and you can't connect to somebody's property typically. It's hard to connect to them without their permission, and the former property owner did not want us on that property ever. So we've messed, worked with them in the past, and they just did not want us even close to the property, so that we can only, at this time, I guess, surmise that that was the reason that we had to stop a hundred and some feet short with the drainage ditch and the, and the marketplace extension. So the city will be a part of that. Hundred eighty-six thousand dollars is what that estimate is for the access and the access off Ninth Street, storm sewer under the road, removing the driveway that's there and the median break that we will close up with this project. It's a lot, so I'll just, I'm just, I would entertain questions, and I'll try to.
Start from the left. Commissioner. Yeah, you do it. I'm sorry.
I guess my question is kind of more of just a general one, I don't.
I don't know if it's for Mr. Stack or Mr. Scrag. Currently, this land has an ag use valuation. At what point does it get triggered to a different zoning? I know I've asked this in the past, and you'd think it'd be sticking by now, but at what point will this convert to a commercial zoning?
Well, generally speaking, by statute and by county appraiser or assessor, regardless of zoning category, you can maintain an agricultural assessment by demonstrating an agricultural use. And we've had, I've had personal conversations with the assessor about what it takes to do that. They, they're generally looking for a crop in a residential setting, they make a comparison of whether it's mowed with a mower or a swather. If they can see swather tracks, they'll consider that agricultural, and so, I don't know that that speaks to your question directly, but there's kind of a presumption that if you can go to the effort of treating it as ag, you can maintain that ag assessment regardless of zoning. At the point that you start to develop it and demonstrate a commercial use, then, and it's, as of January 1 of each year, then the assessor can make that discretionary conversion to a commercial assessment.
But it's not, but it's not triggered by plating, and it's not triggered by the putting in the, or the improvements.
Triggered by plating or zoning, right.
Right.
I'm sorry, you said the improvement?
The, the, they're the assessment, the improvements.
Special assessments, and, right.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, there's examples in residential subdivisions where special assessments have been levied, the improvements have been installed.
You're right.
It is a residential lot with street frontage, but they continue to mow it and pay it, they'll, they'll say, and the assessor continues to assess it at ag.
And I guess my question then would be, in reading through the development agreement, was there any discussion or contemplation about the need to convert that to commercial use as opposed to an ag valuation voluntarily on behalf of the developers?
Um, I don't believe that there was. Two thoughts there. Number one, I think knowing their timeline, I think they're probably going to, you know, trip that threshold regardless of what's in the development agreement, and I don't know that we've talked about it enough to know whether we can have them agree away their statutory rights, but that's a good point. We can, we can pursue that going forward.
Because I think there are some variations between communities about when developers choose to waive their ability to have something valued at an ag rate, and there are some communities that allow it, and just, you know, especially in light of our budget discussions today, I think something that I would like to look at is, you know, making sure that we're assessing properties for what, for what they're being developed for. I mean, it doesn't just benefit the city, it's the county, it's the schools, it's, you know, it's everything, so I guess that's something that I would request in the future that we at least are able to have that conversation with the developers.
Understood.
Just that one question. From a historical perspective, would the other frontage or access roads along Ninth Street pay for the city at large or by the adjacent developers?
My understanding is city at large. We, we completed that section of Ninth Street in, when I first got here, so it was in 2008, 2009, but we put in the medians and the access, and Wilson and Company and the city went through a long process to figure out where access is and access breaks would be in this corridor before I got here. So even south of Schilling to Waterwell has kind of a master planned access study there as well. So, yeah, this, this, this one's been planned for quite a while, we're finally, finally just, this is, finally get to put it in.
Mayor Davis, was your question related to Ninth Street or Marketplace?
That was to Marketplace instead of Ninth Street, I think, yeah, that's what I was going to say. I think he's asking about Marketplace, the access road.
Oh, yeah. That history is probably older. I, I.
Yeah, I didn't know, and that's where I prefaced with historical.
Right.
So I understand why the city's paying it now, but.
Dean, do you happen to know that history at all?
I think Dean probably.
He probably does.
Put you on the spot, but.
When Mr. Stack and I were researching this, it appeared that the section in front of the Marketplace Apartments was constructed by the city at large. I cannot speak to the northern portions, but the very original portion that was constructed from Schilling Road along Sam's Club Target, that area, that was constructed by the developer. It was privately financed, it was not special assessed, but it was not built by the city at large, it was built by the developer of the Sam's Club development. But it appeared to us that the Marketplace section in front of Marketplace Apartments was constructed by the city. On the other side, most of the frontage road leading from Walmart all the way up to its termination was constructed through special assessments.
So, Dean, I've been told, but I don't know if it's accurate, that at some point, the city offered to install the Marketplace section we're now talking about at city expense, and the property owner at the time turned that down?
Yeah, the reason that the, the reason, as Mr. Stack outlined, that the frontage road in front of Marketplace Apartments stopped short of the drainage ditch was to save the city money on a drainage structure because we were never certain that we would be able to extend that road farther south. So at the time of the South Ninth Street project, we had a meeting with Mr. Dooley, and he was the owner of the Pumpkin Patch, and we offered him, in exchange for dedication of the right-of-way for the frontage road, the city, who already had crews and everything out there mobilized, we would construct the remainder of the frontage road at city expense if he would grant the right-of-way, and he said, no, stay away from my property. And so, that left that section unbuilt until the property was no longer owned by him. Now, we have right-of-way to build the road in.
No other questions? I guess we can accept questions or comment from the audience.
Thank you. I'll be back for the next two. Thank you.
Anyone? Go ahead, bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve Resolution Number 197749.
Second.
It's been moved and approved, moved and seconded, sorry, to approve Resolution 19-7749. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing. And 7.2.
Item 7.2, Resolution Number 19-7750, providing for the advisability and authorization of a special improvement district for water, sanitary sewer, street, and drainage improvements in the Stone Lake Edition Phase 2, and authorize city staff to accept bids for the improvements.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Back again. The Stone Lake subdivision, Phase 2, started last year as well, on December 17th. Let's see, let me find my notes here. Actually, this, okay, this subdivision has been, okay, July 6, 2010 was when it was first platted, so we've been working on the first phase of that since that time, and then, yeah, actually, this one came to us in January of this last, of this year. So January 14th is when we went through the first, kind of the two-step process for developer submits an application and the form of the petition requesting the, that the commission approve special assessment process for, for a subdivision. So they did, we looked at that, and January 14th of this year, they gave us the review factors and kind of the markets, and what kind of houses were going to be in there, and it's a 14, a 17-lot subdivision, so it's just a small section there at the very end. And, see, the unique thing maybe about this one, there's some larger lots on the south side, you know, next to the lake, and then there's some smaller lots on the north side. So the property owner wanted this to be per square foot, because of the lot prices, you know, there's, couldn't do a very equal lot, lot assessment for this. It's similar to what it was in Stone Lake as well for the other, the other Phase 1 portion. The unique thing here that took a while to figure out was an emergency access road along the north boundary of actually Stone Lake number, section of Phase 3, and it's, right now, that road is kind of, it's a driveway for the property owner on the north side, and that is going to be the, kind of the required emergency access road for fire for the next, for quite a while till the subdivision is totally built out. And so, as a part of that discussion with bond counsel, that could not be assessed. It's outside the limits of the benefit district, and it's a temporary road, it doesn't, it's not going to be a long-term public improvement, so it can't be assessed. Trying to summarize exactly how she explained it, but bond counsel said that could not be assessed with the, with the development. So that was, took a while to get worked out, because basically, it serves both Stone Lake Phase 2 and Phase 3. We got a petition for, or a request for Phase 3 in June of this year, so kind of, it started moving quicker then, and at this point, that will be addressed in the development agreement in the next item, but for now, we've talked with Mr. Bradley and Mr. Welsh about that, and basically, they understand that that road has to be built, and they have to work out the pay, pretty much like the development agreement says, to get it done before they can issue any building permits and certificates of occupancy, because they've basically reached the maximum amount of lots that can be built in a subdivision without another access. So that emergency access road will serve that purpose. I guess that's, that's it for this one. I can stand for questions as well.
If I could add a couple of clarifications. Back in 2010, entirety of what we think of as Stone Lake was developed and plotted by the developer at that time, and so, the development you're seeing today took a little while from Jan, from 2010 to the present to get underway, but two sections of that have been sold. So this one, the applicant is Mr. Bradley, and he's purchased a portion, and then the next item that you're going to see is another portion that was purchased by other developers, and so, and that kind of contributes to the multiple applications, and Israel is kind of moving the timeline along, I think. And then, secondly, when that plating was done, there was a recognition of a need for connection of this subdivision to the property to the north in anticipation of both the emergency access and then the possibility of permanent access if a subdivision is built to the north. So if you, if you look closely at the plat, you're going to see what's a T-intersection right now has a, what looks like a smaller lot, but it's a plating of sufficient width for right-of-way to extend that, that roadway north. So it was anticipated all along, now that we've hit the number that, that requires it, it was necessary to get that provision in place.
Just one question on the, on the emergency access road, I know it's for emergency vehicles to come in. Can residents use that?
No.
To exit if they're, if they perceive an emergency, and, or is it?
Well, it's going to be.
The party department has a special.
Right, it's going to be a special key lock type of approach. We have that, quite a few subdivisions, it seems like, around the city where they have a lock and gate and chain type of situation, so typically, they're not used by residents, but I guess it, I guess it could be if there were some, some reason for that. We, I haven't had that question come up before. A lot of times, they use them when they don't want to be used, the people don't want, they're used for not as good, good of things, so you don't want them to, you don't want people using them all the time for, you know, whatever reason, only in emergency.
And just to be clear, there, there is a design standard that I want to say has to carry, well, I forget the pound, geez.
75,000 pounds, yeah, right.
Or pounds, and so, there's a specified width and a specified load capacity. So it's not, and I don't want you to think that that is a paved full-width street with curb and gutter, that is most likely a gravel road intended for carrying, you know, fire trucks and their weight. In the event of an emergency, one of two things, the fire department may use the, that access and the keys to let themselves into the subdivision in and out if they need to, or they might, you know, open it up if, if the other entrance is blocked and there's need to allow traffic. But on just a day-to-day basis, it would not be a alternate entrance to the subdivision.
All right. I'll let you all go first, I'm sorry.
Just a question, and maybe from Mr. Andrew, I don't know. How many lots still remain available in Fa, in Stone Lake Phase 1?
I'm not sure.
Seven.
Yeah, I'll let you, I thought it was almost sold out.
All the lots are spoken for, they're the only vacant lots that don't have construction on them, or a couple lakeside lots, but every non-lakeside lot has a building on it or underway.
Okay.
Of the 30, there's 34 lots in Phase 1, and there have been permits issued for every lot except for a few on the lake, and those are spoken for purchase but not yet built on.
Okay, okay. I was just looking, because I, I pulled what we looked at back in June, and I think there were something like 12 lots available at that time, so that's, that's good that we're getting close to that capacity. And where I was going with this is, this, the improvements were put in in 2012, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I was just, you know, thinking, obviously, this number isn't correct, because back in June, it was 12, so I figured on 10, but if we had had 10 lots being assessed at a $500 valuation over a period of like five years, we would have generated nearly $30,000 from, from those lots, and as it is, 10 lots over that same amount of time at an ag valuation only nets us about $200. So I guess my concern, as it was with the, with the previous item, is that, you know, how long after putting, and this is just, this is a rhetorical question, I know you can't tell me, and, and the developers can't say, you know, on X date, we're going to be filled up, sold out, you know, at capacity, but, you know, I, I just wonder how long it's going to take to, to get us to where we're receiving the, the value on those lots that, for what they're going to be used for.
I just don't know.
Yeah, and then I said, yeah.
Yeah.
It's just a rhetorical question. I don't, I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
Okay. The, and my understanding is too, that this, the county appraiser can assess it however he sees it, and then it's, can also be appealed, and so, it's also, it's processed by back and forth between the property owner and the county appraiser in that case, and as you've probably looked at or researched, each county in the state is a little different on that, so it's, it's unique, I guess, maybe for Salina, and, and different if you go two counties away.
Right, exactly.
It's unique, so I don't know if that will be solved in the future or not, but we can definitely, for any future developments, that could be one of the questions that we can ask.
Commissioner Hopp. Who, and I ask a question about just the impact of the financing.
I'll try, and I'll probably quickly resort to Finance Director Pack.
He's here.
What's of the columns of obligated monies that be discussed in the study session a little while ago, which column is the special assessment debt being paid out? Obviously, over time, money's coming in for that as well, so, but it's.
The money from the special assessments comes into the debt service fund and gets paid out of the debt service fund. So we send a, a list every year to the county, who assesses those special assessments against every one of those properties, collects the money and sends it back to us, and we pay that debt out of that debt service fund.
So, so as our debt service expense goes up associated with special assessments, our revenue should go up a corresponding amount, with the exception of deferrals, whether that's an ag deferral, a 126819 deferral, and community large payments, so, and I don't know what, I'm purely guesstimating here, but say 80, 85, 90%, is kind of your typical run-of-the-mill special assessment, you're going to see the added debt, and you're going to see the added revenue, and one's supposed to offset the other. We don't, we've looked historically at, at our default rates, we don't have a history of defaults. We may have a little bit of history of individual payments falling in arrears until it rises to the level of, you know, being, approaching the possibility of share of sale, but the lots have enough value that, we don't see anyone just walking away from them and letting the foreclosure process play itself out. So, project by project, we have, we do accept city at large responsibility, the Marketplace being an example of that, and then, the other scenario is ag deferrals, and 126819 deferrals are, you know, developments that straddle the city limits line and, and properties that are eligible for a deferral. And those two instances. And those two instances, 126819 deferral, at the point that they benefit by way of platting and, and road access or anything that, that rises to the level of benefit, they are required to make a catch-up payment to catch up to wherever the debt service is and then they can make annual payments from that point forward. And the instance of ag deferrals, at the point that the benefit starts, that becomes their year one and then they are allowed to make annual payments for fifteen more years at the rate that they would have paid if they hadn't started in year one. So there is some incremental lost time value of money by that delay.
Did, did we have much in the way of deferrals on Stone Lake in that it took a little while to get started?
In Stone Lake, I don't think there were any.
Delay versus deferral. Deferral is where we actually agree that we're going to do the improvement, we're going to fund it and the special assessments don't kick in.
But those weren't deferrals?
That was, no, that was not the case in Stone Lake. In fact, the developer paid those specials from 2010 to the present.
Okay. And the reason I was asking, I just wanted to make sure that, now while these do count against our-
Yes.
Statutory-
Yes, they do.
Debt limit.
Yes, they do.
Assuming the money is paid back on a timely basis, the, it's basically our lower interest rate, I guess is our nice citizen stimulus to, to housing development, i, is our cost. And we can recoup some of those administrative costs as well.
Yes, we factor that into the, the special assessment amount in, in the assessments. And so it's, it's definitely not one-for-one, but, you know, we have special assessments being paid that basically offset past debt as we bring on new special assessments for projects like this. So if we're really going to look at it, we'd look at all of our debt. We kind of strat, and we're working on that, but we would stratify it by projects, by special assessments, by deferrals. And we could give you greater detail than, you know, we had, recently we've tried to provide you what our debt service schedule looks like in terms of what's on the books and how it's going to get paid off. We could stratify that a couple layers more detail as relates to special assessments, ag deferrals, 126819 deferrals, project by project.
Exactly. As the city manager asked me what I thought would be a simple, simple task, turned out not to be, which was just a, a list of all of our special assessments, them out, when they came on, when they go off. And the deferrals were brought up and the fact that, that debt service is often rolled into other debt services and it's not just a simple matter of going to the book and you have to go layer by layer.
We do have a list-
We're working on it.
We do have a list of projects that are funded through, that were special assessments and there are several of them that were refunded, so that makes it a little bit more difficult. But we can tell which, which of those specialist assessments, when they went on, when they should pay off. They're all fifteen-year bonds to kind of coincide with the special assessment payments that we're receiving. So we can see that information. We do have that information and we can kind of see how much is going to drop off every year. And looking at the numbers just that I have gathered so far, that ranges anywhere from we could, we're dropping off $200,000 in 2020, then $50,000 in 2021. And then it kind of levels out about $150,000 a year in debt payment. That kind of drops off as those payments for those older ones. But then as we add new ones, of course, those are going to be absorbed in that, in that amount.
And just so we're clear, that is debt payment.
Right, just debt payment.
So if you want to compare that number to these numbers, you got to convert that debt payment to the present value of what could be financed-
Right.
-going forward. I mean, I don't, I don't know off the top of my head how much $150,000 worth of debt payment will support in terms of project financing.
I know at a year it's about seventy thousand for a million dollars, or for twenty years, but I don't want it is over fifteen years.
Statutorily, where are we at on our debt service as a percentage?
We're at forty-seven percent of our, of our limit. That was in twenty eight, the end of 2018. So that won't include anything that we've issued in 2019.
Because just long-term plan, just trying to figure out how, how we get a balance between, you know, desire to facilitate housing that's needed and our ability to pay for it or our ability to withstand creeping up on that statutory debt limit. And I didn't know whether it's worthwhile, not today, but to consider a maximum amount that we would spend on special assessment for housing, be it an absolute dollar amount or percentage of some figure, be it budget or whatever. And just so that we can keep a reasonable amount of money available for that purpose. Cause it doesn't look like our county by itself is going to anytime soon change the system of financing, at least not in the next year. But just so we, we keep track of, of how much load we're placing on our statutory debt limit in case we truly do have a big emergency come up that we need to borrow a lot of money for.
And I will say, one of the other numbers I looked at was how much, how much current outstanding debt do we have for special assessments as opposed to other debt? No, it was about fourteen percent with special assessment right now.
Thank you.
And you may have provided this for us in, in the past, I'm not sure. But, you know, in terms of, you know, being at forty-seven, forty-four, forty-seven, fifty percent of our, our statutory limit or whatever, do we have any data that's, that, you know, shows what other rural communities are at? I mean, is, is forty-seven percent healthy or are we getting, are we getting into trouble? I didn't know if there was, you know, like in terms of your work with finance, if there's a recommended percentage of toward our, toward our limit that we carry and it might be helpful information to have, you know, if we, we pursue the conversation like Mayor Davis suggested about establishing some kind of a limit.
I'm not sure if there's a recommended limit. I could look into that. I'm sure GFOA probably has something. But I will say that as we've gone through, like our rating, our rating calls, our ratings, one of the things that they do mention is our level of debt. So that is a concern that we need to be keeping our eye on as we go through some of these. But we've had a lot of big projects financed in the last few years, so I think that probably adds to that.
Just, counsel, maybe can answer. Do they look at special assessments when they look at bond rating differently than they do other debt and the fact that this is asset-backed?
Right. Yeah, it's off for a couple of things. And there is a state report that, on, you know, the property tax rates for every community in the state. And then there's also a breakout of some of their debt. There is a column in that report for special assessment debt, but it's, it's not consistent in the way that it's reported. Salina reports zero and we obviously know that's, we, we're not at zero. So I think it's the way that our debt is issued and we don't issue standalone special assessment debt. So it gets rolled into this general debt column. So in answer to your question, I don't see consistency in terms of, you know, what's reported and what data is available. That is partly what prompted us to say, we need to go break out all of our historic debt issuances to try to get it and get our arms around special assessment debt. With respect to the, to bond rating agencies, I don't know that they, you know, as a standard practice, identify special assessment debt like that, but we have an opportunity to have a conversation with them about, you know, our financial performance and answer questions that, that they might have. So we certainly, at that time, make the case that it, it's one step short of secured debt. You, not only do you have the special assessment debt issuance and the responsibility for the payments, but if you've been prudent in terms of the platting and the application of those special assessments, it's unlikely that someone's going to let a property with value go to sale on the sheriff, on the courthouse steps at sheriff's rail for cents on the dollar. Now, we have a little bit of history back in the nineties where we had special assessments on drainage ditches and things that we kind of learned our lesson that we shouldn't allow the special assessments to be applied in the first place. And there's, are some examples of other communities in the state that kind of overran their market or were overly optimistic about their market and, and they did have properties that went for sale. And then there's another community that I looked into it in greater detail and I think they had two things going on. They had some very large special assessments on kind of estate lots, that type of thing. And then they had some platting that after it was platted, the roads were built, just the configuration of the lots was not conducive to selling on the open market. So they ended up in that instance having some defaults, but Salina's not had that history.
And I do think one of the important things is we continue to monitor how many residential lots we have available in different price ranges. I think that's something we've always said. The other thing is I think it'd be interesting to know what percentage of our, of our special assessments is, you know, when you have your list, is what's commercial, what's residential? Because I think a couple of years ago when we looked at that, I was surprised at the amount of commercial projects that we had done through special assessment.
Some of those commercial developments have a story behind them as well. West Diamond Drive was, at the time, wa, was a project that had general direction from the city commission. We want to find a way to make this work with West Diamond Drive being a city limits line. And so there was, you know, 126819 and ag deferral on it. The other one was the Menards development that to really make that work, we had to extend water and sewer into what we call the donut hole. So it extended out into, you know, a sizable distance into properties that we knew weren't going to develop anytime soon, but it was a priority to get the, the donut hole ready for development. So, yeah, in addition to just the fact they're commercial projects, some of them have a story behind them.
Just, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just going to say real quick before I forget, it's something that Ms. Pack said about, you know, noted on our audits about having a relatively high percentage of, of debt. Obviously the, the bond underwriters and they, they obviously have a percentage in their head about, okay, if you're at twenty percent, you know, that's awesome. And, and that, it might be just as simple as a question to, to them about, you know, what, you know, what would get us, you know, to the next level in terms of, of improving our bond rating? Or, you know, you know, hypothetically, you know, if we get to fifty-five percent, does that then reduce our bond rating so that we're, we're going to be seeing higher interest rates and such?
Yeah.
But as opposed to gathering data from, you know, a lot of communities or whatever.
And that is completely a reasonable question. The, the kind of answers we get back are more than science. They, you know, they don't give you a definitive, here's the threshold and then you go up X percent. But you can get some, and it depends on the bond raider. And there's a lot of story behind what's going on in your community, what kind of development. Are you trending positive, negative, that type of thing? You know, when Roger Edgar was here on behalf of George K. Baum as our financial advisor, he, as related to the star bond project, he noted that, you know, a downgrading your rating or an increase in your, in your borrowing rate isn't necess, you know, isn't the end of the world if, in the case of the star, of the downtown project, if it's a priority and it's a generational project, if you're making an informed decision, you, you can do that. Kind of the same thing here. We certainly want to be well-informed, but if it's a pri, if housing combined with other projects are a priority, we just go into it making an informed decision as a, and that's an option at least.
I'll do a little research on those numbers too.
Just to, and may, you may not have this answer in your head, roughly what's one percent of that statutory debt limit worth?
It's calculated by thirty percent of our assessed valuation. Right, in 2018, that was $146 million, so it'd be about one and a half, little under one and a half million in debt to, to change that about one percent.
Thank you.
So that will change every year. So we hope it goes up.
I'd expect you to have the number in your head, I appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Anything else?
All right. Thank you very much for coming up to the hot seat, hot stand. Any questions, comments from anyone in the audience? Seeing none, I'm sorry, there is one.
Thank you. Good afternoon. John Blanchard, 250 South Ninth Street. I want to follow up on a question that Commissioner Hodges had asked earlier and got a little bit of feedback from Dan Stack and, and the city manager. If I recall correctly, the, the discretion of providing special assessments is, with, lies with city commission. There, there's no more shall. It's may. That was a big deal at one time. The, the point I think that Commissioner Hodges was bringing up is that we are under significant budget strain. Our sales taxes are, are down, our base sales is basically the same as they were in 2014. I think we're going to see increasing with the downtown star bonds, we're going to see a little more suck out of the sales tax. So we're going to see increased pressure on the property tax. And I think your question was important because what it does is it says, before we continue to raise mill levies and raise taxes, let's make sure that we are collecting all the sales taxes that are available to us. And if we do a development agreement, if somebody comes in and they want special assessment financing and we agree to offer it to them, I think it's up to us to use our discretion to say, if you agree to pay the vacant lot fee and not protest an agricultural use on that, we'd be more than happy to extend that to you. And that's something that I think a lot of people could live with. I mean, I think that I'd be willing to live with that in fact, and that might come as a surprise to a lot of people. But the question all along has not been about risk or anything, defaults or anything else on special assessments. It's always been about when you put in a road and a street, you want to start collecting property taxes on that as soon as possible, ideally with a home on it. But I will give you one lot out there. I went through this last night. I went through and looked as of the first of this year, there were fourteen lots that, at a minimum, that claimed agricultural assessed valuation at Stone Lake Phase One. Fourteen. One, there's one lot that actually is declared vac, uh, assessed as a vacant lot. It pays about $700, $750 a year in taxes. So seven hundred and fifty versus four dollars is significant, especially when you have people come in from outside agencies like downtown and with like OCCK and the City Go Bus Service, which really provides services to the community. We say to them and to all the departments, you need to cut your budgets five percent because we don't have enough money in the, in our, in our, in our general fund. We need to be collecting every single bit of sales ta, or property taxes that we can. And just as a parting note, I don't think it's an unrealistic ask to ask that if, if you want, if you want to have your property committed to residential use, you pay a vacant lot value until you put a house on it and then you pay the full value. But I will tell you this, I did significant research across the state, Ellis County, Reno County, Riley County, Douglas County, Johnson County, all these other places. And the two places where the agriculture use is used, almost, I think in Salina exclusively on a vacant lot, we're the only place. I think a lot of that responsibility rests, as Dan says, with the assessor in saying he needs to assess those properties as vacant and make the property owner protest that with the BODA. One last note I will say on this is that thankfully, communities, and I think Overland Park is a leader in this, and we should be. Overland Park is hurting because of their property tax, the lack of property tax they're taking in. So are we. There is legislation that is being introduced in the Kansas Legislature this year that will do exactly what Commissioner Hodges and Dan Stack and I think Mike were talking about, and that I am talking about. And that is to say, once you, once you put improvements in on a piece of property, a residential property or commercial property or whatever, once those are, are in place, you can no longer claim that that is an agricultural use. And so I think for years, we've been, pardon the vernacular here, but we've kind of been, taxpayer's been screwed over and loopholes have been taken. And you can go up to Cedar Ridge Estates and there are lots that are completely covered with cedar trees. And I would beg to ask what in the hell the agricultural use of that is? Okay, I think we need to be more diligent at the assessor's office, but I also hope that the school board and the county commissioners and this commissioner would fight for every single tax dollars that the tax, that the taxpayer should be collecting. So I urge you to find out why, and maybe Mike, you can answer, why can not, why can that not be an element of a development con, a development agreement? And thank you very much.
Yeah, and I think I'm repeating myself, but we as staff and me personally, I pursued the vacant, the assessment of the vacant property as ag question with the assessor and, and kind of came to the conclusion that it was statutorily authorized, but have, have not taken up this approach. So be more than happy to do that. I don't know the answer. Ultimately, bond counsel's going to tell us whether that's, and legal counsel are going to tell us whether that's permissible or an overreach. I understand the concept and it certainly-
and certainly we can, we can research.
That's a great idea.
Legal counsel have a off-the-cuff opinion. Rather think about it. Okay.
When it involves bond counsel, I ask first before I comment, their view on, as it relates to the bonds, would be primary. To the extent we can help, we'll be glad to look at it as well. But I would expect they have experience with that possibly.
Would a city have the right to demand that type of, say, payment, but payment at that rate, even if the county assessor might feel otherwise? Is that the nature of the question?
And I'm having to speculate a little bit, but based on all the conversations I've had with bond counsel, they are very mindful of a direct nexus, not only between benefit and payment, but proportional allocation of cost to benefit. So, as relates to special assessments, we frequently have to have a conversation about road access points and square footage of lots and the rationale that gets us to the assessment amount, which causes me to think that they're going to have some concern about equitable allocation of cost. Now, having said that, Mr. Blanchard's right, it is a discretionary decision on your part. If, if you can't reach agreement, you could choose not to authorize special assessment financing at all. But, beyond that, I'd really need to talk to bond counsel about this provision being incorporated.
Is there anyone in the room who would actually be able to settle the issue of what, how these lots are currently assessed?
Oh, I'm confident, in speaking with the county assessor, well, I'm confident in my prior knowledge of the statute and my conversations with the assessor, that our current approach is, when I say are, the county's current approach is consistent with statute, and that is, if the owner asserts an ag use and demonstrates an ag use, which can include silage, hay, you know, rather than mowing it on a weekly or regular basis, allowing it to grow and, and cutting it with a swather and a baler, the county's approach is that satisfies the ag use for the purpose of assessment. And my understanding is, we've tried to, again, the county's tried to take that approach and has been overruled in terms of when it's appealed. But, this approach isn't the county assessor, it's, you know, a pre-agreement to that assessment approach. So, that, that might be an alternative.
Now, can the city contest the county assessor's opinion?
I don't know off the top of my head. It'd be in two, two fashions. One is just to contest it in general. The other might be to try to weigh in on a Board of Tax Appeals appeal in some way. But without researching that further, I don't know.
I'm sorry, I don't know whether the city would have standing in that circumstance. Back to the other point, I do think, depending on bond counsel's opinion, that we are more in a matter of contract law. And I would expect that implementation would involve a contractual commitment, not, that wouldn't be binding on the county appraiser, but would more than likely go to a commitment on the part of the owner not to utilize the property in a way that triggers the qualification for the ag use. So, if it gets to contract law strictly, I would imagine bond counsel would probably defer to the city. And we can certainly look at that. I think step one is to verify with bond counsel whether there are any other aspects that I'm not aware of.
Is that a short process, or?
Question and answer is the easy part. Depending on the answer, then we'll have to figure out a path forward.
So, just so that I know for sure, are any of the properties of Stone Lake, do you clear it ag now?
I presume they are. Again, it's not, it's not a zone...
Just heard two is kind of different. We didn't get the same answer. I just wanted...
Most of the assessed valuations I've seen on the vacant Stone Lake lots indicate that they're assessed at an agricultural value, not as a vacant residential lot value.
And I apologize if I'm, well, I am repeating, but I apologize if it's not necessary. Our zoning classification and the fact that it is improved with water, sewer, and street doesn't change the status. It's a function of the assessed value approach taken by the county.
I mean, I'm the last one of the five of us up here who you should send to see if it's being used for ag use, but I don't recall seeing what I would generally consider that use. But I could have missed it.
I would say, and I'm not criticizing the assessor at all, I had a personal conversation, and they were able to demonstrate that they have documentation where they've gone out and looked. And the reason I keep referring to the term mowed with a swather is that is the standard that they seem to apply. If they can see demonstration that it's not pristine-limy mowed like a residential yard, it is allowed to grow and mowed as hay, silage, something along those lines, then they grant the ag assessment.
So, we're not losing the special assess, just to be clear, we're not using, losing the special assessment?
Correct. But it's not, that is correct. The obligation to pay the special assessment starts at the point that the improvements are in and that, that levy is assessed. What's at issue is it being assessed at a lower value as ag, which then results in lower property taxes being paid than if it were assessed as residential. And I realize we're using the term assessed in two different ways.
So, to be clear, yeah, the obligation to pay off, say, a million dollars in special assessments remains regardless. It's just, we could start, and by we, I'm talking about the taxing entities, could begin to capture the value that's created by putting in the infrastructure at an earlier rate.
Yes. And the reason I hesitate is...
At an earlier time, not at an earlier rate, but at an earlier point in time.
Yep.
Because the 15 years on the act won't start until it, until the property's improved. The ag doesn't have to pay the catch-up.
Correct. Yeah. So, let's assume that a residential subdivision is zone R1, they come in for special assessments, you approve it, and the more common scenario is they go ahead and do the improvements at their expense and demonstrate to us that it's done to our standards and submit their invoices. At that point, we will have issued temporary notes, and we'll have proceeds to pay them back, and then we'll roll that debt into permanent long-term financing. What we'll also do is assess the cost of that, that debt-financed improvements across the parcels as agreed in the development agreement and the resolution of advisability. So, the special assessment obligations kick in. And so, we're not setting aside their annual payment of the applicable special assessment debt. That happens. What doesn't happen, or what currently is the case, is even though it's zoned residential, if they're not developing it and they can satisfy the county assessor's standard for an agricultural assessment, then they get assessed at that ag value, which is lower than the residential value, and their property, annual property taxes are lower. So, then to add to the confusion, we call both of those things an assessment. One's an assessment of value, the other's an assessment of their annual payment towards the debt. And to add in confusion even further, there are circumstances where the special assessment financing allows for ag deferral. But that ag deferral is a little bit different and isn't in play in either one of these items that are before you today.
Yeah, that's probably the point I wanted to clear up. Okay.
About all that value that we could add. Might make our, might make our bond rating go up if we had, all of a sudden, we had more, more value.
Come on up, please.
Just, sorry.
Commissioners, Mayor Davis, Todd Welsh, 300 South Ninth. Many things to talk about. Hoping to, I know we, seems like we beat that a long ways, but I wanted to share a little bit of insight on that. Believe it or not, the subdivision that I did, which was part of the workforce housing, which is up off of East Crawford and Prairie Lane, that property, we were paying, I think, I'd have to understand, once it got platted. But the other, once it got platted on Phase Three, there were no utilities to it, still done to this date, even though it's been a year, but we're working on that. I was being charged $3.98 because it was platted and it was being farmed as agricultural. But I ended up getting a stack of assessments per lot and block of each one of those for like $3.98. This may also surprise you. I do believe a little bit with Mr. Blanchard, him and I've had a conversation about this. And with a little bit of a twist, once it has been approved, if it's just platted or, but it's platted but no improvements have been done to it yet, I still believe that there are people who are using it as agricultural. For example, like Stone Lake, Phase Three, which you'll hear about today, they are currently hay-ing that. So, even though it's platted and there are actual lots showing there, I don't believe that those should be assessed because there is no improvement put on that lot yet. It's just still agricultural and they're hay-ing it. Different then, if water, sewer, and everything is available, you would look at that and maybe say, which is what Commissioner Hodges is saying and what Blanchard is saying, is that it's a fully assessed lot. Well, I agree with him 50%. The other 50% is I'm listening and saying, well, maybe you should only be taxed upon the improvement. The land is still the land until it's at its highest and best use. Its highest and best use is when a house is put on it. By adding improvements to it, maybe then the assessment only is assessed on how much is the assessor could come up is, what's that improvement worth to that piece of land once it's been there? And the reason I say that is because land is location, location. Every one of those lots is different. I'm not quite sure how an assessor could go through and say, just because the developer is asking $40,000 for a lot, whether then you could assess it at $40,000 as a vacant lot. The lot could sell eventually for 25 based on a drainage ditch, a high-power line. Who knows what it could be assessed at as a vacant lot? So, I think it'd be interesting for each assessor to go through and say, okay, let's move from going from agricultural to a fully assessed lot at whatever the developer is asking for. So, I want to be cautious as we're talking about this, as a commission, to say, okay, what is our next step? Because we have some plots coming in front of us and maybe in the future. The other thing that struck me as odd is I felt like, and again, even though I agree with it, I feel like I'd almost, if I came up here as a developer in Salina and you said, look, Todd, we'll grant you that if you'll let us tax you at a full lot rate, and then we'll give you a special assessment. Boy, I feel like you're strong-arming me a little bit. It's like, I'll give you this if you do that. But if you're not willing to do that, then I'm not going to give you that. Unless this commission were to put that into a policy, like we had talked about before, that says, look, we may give you special assessments if you meet X, Y, and Z. And if X, Y, and Z is inside that policy, and I know as a developer coming into Saline County, that it says that I shall go from agricultural to a vacant lot, once it's been platted and all improvements and has been turned over to me as a developer for sellable lots. If that's in a policy, and I agree going forward with that, I don't have a problem with that. But if it's one of those things where we go, well, we're going to hit you with that when you come up here, then I feel like maybe the developers would feel a little strong-arm saying, we're not going to give you that unless you do this, because that's what we think. Anyway, enough of that topic. I think we were talking about Mr. Bradley's Stone Lake Two, and so if we could get back to that. Whether you agree with this or not, I have self-appointed myself as your building lot inventory specialist. And I would like to give you a little bit of a rundown so you know what's going on. In River Trail, there are about 10 lots that are left to, to be built upon. In Stone Lake, they are completely sold out. You couldn't call me today and ask for a lot, and I couldn't sell you one that these gentlemen own because they're, they're completely, either have a permit on there, they're either sold and are waiting for plans to be back. But Stone Lake is completely sold out. And Mrs. Hodges, Commissioner Hodges' thing of saying there were 12 lots left, I think they hired a phenomenal real estate agent, and with that short amount of time, he was able to sell all 12 lots.
I wonder who that was?
I don't know who that was, but it was, it was a great plugging point. All those lots are gone. If you go up into Magnolia Hills, Mr. Dunn, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Kelly has just punched a hole or put in a slab in the very last lot available in Magnolia Hills, Phase One, Two, and Three. So, again, I could go down the part of River Run, Grand Prairie, all of those are lots that I consider to be higher-end lots that we've all talked about before. What we're looking for in Saline County now are lots that we can build homes on that we can sell between $240,000 and $320,000 homes. Is exactly what Mr. Bradley has put in front of you today, is the back area, Stone Lake. I pulled up the homes that have sold in Stone Lake, and one sold as low as $247,000. And the most expensive one that I've seen to date is $425,000 along the lakeside. The lots that you're looking at today, Mr. Bradley is going to put them for sale, and we're hoping to build again that $280,000 to $310,000 home in that back corner, along with the lake lots where he hopes to put his family in there, as well as have other ones for sale, which would be, again, in that $350,000 to $400,000, because the lot price gets more expensive. So, the house price obviously starts getting more expensive along the lake as they're more desirable. So, the second thing I wanted to talk about, which Mr. Stack had talked about, and is the fire, the fire access, the temporary access. I only bring this to your attention because, again, for some of you, if you get re-elected, some of you have more time here, and for some of the gentlemen who are here who may be on the commission in the future, I can remember when the original developers of Stone Lake wanted two or three exit points out onto Ohio. And the planning commission, as well as the current commission, did not like that it was going to stop the flow of traffic. I can remember sitting here and going, well, gosh, you know how many times you go down Ohio, and either they can go into Ellsworth, and then you've got to stop, and they go into Minneapolis Street, and then they stop and go into Stack here, and then they stop and go there? Like, that was a big topic of conversation. And so, they went back and they developed this plat to include one major entrance. And to get past the emergency, they made them put a double lane on the other side, so that if there was an accident, they wouldn't have to go around it or do anything like that. And so, they changed this whole plat based on the planning commission and the city commission's recommendation. And as I stand before you today, I'm going to watch two guys who I have absolutely no vested interest in pay $83,000, was the bid, to put in a temporary access road along the side of Stone Lake. And it's just crazy to me because when the gentleman on the back there, the new developers who are going to buy it, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Piracy, and Mr. Broberg, when they go in that entranceway and they take a left and they put that road in, it will connect with Stone Lake where it stops. And I'm trying to figure out where the emergency problem arises of how big of an accident would have to happen for them not to be able to get in there and go left and go around and then go straight. And I don't know that it cannot be done now. I'm just saying for future, this is the reason, because then the next time we get up in front of a plat, you guys all look at us and go, oh, how can houses, minimum house be $280,000? It starts because now those lot prices will all be, you'll go up about $3,000 or $4,000 per lot because this temporary fire access, which will probably never be used, will be put in. So, the lots now that would cost a client $30,000 will now be $34,000, $35,000 because we had to put this in. It cannot be assessed in, through bond counsel has said, that it cannot be assessed, it has to be done privately. Therefore, these two guys are going to split, one at 75%, 74%, one at 26%, and pay $83,000 to put in a road that will never be used and probably was put in place because the current commission said, look, we don't want to stop and go, stop and go. We don't want to use our blinker. And I just ask that we maybe take a look at this in future things and say, hey, when we're looking at these plats, can we make really good decisions? Because if not, everybody else says it hurts the taxpayer, it hurts the person who wants to buy the next lot because that needs to take place. With that being said, I hope that you approve the special assessment financing that have been put in front of you by the engineers, and let Mr. Bradley get started. Be happy to take any questions.
That wasn't current commission, that was prior commission.
I'm sorry.
I get blamed for enough, you throwing stuff at me already.
Well, and I guess I would say, I couldn't agree with you more in regard to having a policy that's applied fairly and consistently among all projects. But I also acknowledge that at some point in time, a policy will be put in place. And any policy, not necessarily this, but any, any, any point in time when you adopt a policy, there are going to be people that say, it's not fair because this policy didn't apply to so-and-so, but yet it's applying to me because it's a different moment in time. And that being said, I, I agree 100%. And that being said, I agree 100%. It's something I would love to see added, so that everybody has the same expectation upfront in terms of establishing a land value that I would view, and I can't speak for anybody else up here, to be more compatible with what it really is, once those improvements are in. So I thank you for your remarks and just keep that in mind, if future commissions do enact a policy, I would just ask that, whatever that policy is, understand that we can't make it 100% fair all the time. There's always going to be a start date to something that we adopt, that perhaps somebody earlier got something that you won't get.
Yeah, and I agree with you, and I would hope in development policy, whether it be special assessments or how we tax assess a vacant lot, is that it's put out there and say, okay, we're going to do this start date of 2022 or 2020, so that it gives the developers who, again, have purchased land, it's so tough, and that's how we talked about from the prior commission, is, that's how we got sideways with the prior commission, was it was like, we had made all these, I mean, you don't buy just land six months out and then say, like, we're buying this stuff, we bought it years ago, five or six years ago. And again, if we ever made the policy that said, we're not going to do special assessments anymore, or that we phased it out over the next five years or ten, I'm not saying that I'm against that. Matter of fact, again, I'm the opponent for it in the fact of it will bring land prices down out on the outskirts of town. The reason, and we've been down this before, the reason that we can't, or we ask for special assessments is because it makes sense. We pay 20,000 an acre because we know we can get special assessments, but if I knew five years down the road that this commission said, look, our goal is in 2024 to phase out special assessments to 50% and by 2026 be completely out of it so that we can reduce the 14% at our bond rate, that's, as long as I know that, and as long as my future developers know that, then that's okay. It's that thing of going, in six months, no more special assessments. That's the tough part. So any policy put in place, I just ask that this commission or any current commission say, let's put it out at a way that we can actually work around it.
So how long would you say that that notice needs to, I mean?
A hundred years.
Well, I was going to say, how long do you want us to subsidize your bad business decisions?
I wouldn't call it bad business decisions, I think that those are business decisions.
Aggressive business decisions.
I think those were business decisions based off knowing what we knew. Now that I know what your plans are or that it could change on current commissions, it just, it flips so fast, and I think that's where it's at on there. And so I think that, you know, any policy put in place, whether it's phased out, whether it's 30%, 50%, and then to a full percent, I think it almost takes eight to nine years to turn around from 100% of not doing it, or you're going to bankrupt some of these guys who made decisions based off old policies. And you can say, well, Todd, that happens all the time. It happens all the time when we can't control it, but you are in control whether you bankrupt me. You are in control whether you say, Todd, I'm going to give you X amount of time. And what I'm saying is, I'm saying if this commission's going to do that, it's five years of saying, look, for the next five years, we're going to look at doing this for X amount of percent. But our goal is that 2028 is a city commission, and if the next people want to take that away, is that that wouldn't be there, I think that's okay. It just can't be the next current commission, whatever bodies are up here in front of us of making hass decisions based on what your beliefs are on decisions that I've made for my family and for the betterment of the community of saying, okay, the policy is now in place come January 1. That will bankrupt people based on what we knew, and you're, you know, you don't want people in the community to go bankrupt over decisions. They aren't bad decisions, they were decisions based on what I knew at the time and what I thought was right, and to change those on a dime could be tough.
Mr. Welsh, I appreciate your support of the individual homeowner, because I think any of these costs, they go right to the person's pocketbook and the expense of the house. It seems to me if you have a house with specials here in the same house exactly that doesn't have the specials, the bank is going to more likely loan on the house with the specials. How long is it going to take for the market to adjust for that perspective?
And I don't know, again, it's a tough question that's on there. I will always tell you again, if I built two homes side by side and one was $230,000 with 20 in specials, and one was 250, which one do you think the client would buy?
With no specials, you mean?
The one that's 230. With special, because that's all they see, like, buy that house for 230 or that one for 250. And the reason is, I'm not going to live there for 15 years. I only have to pay for the specials for the amount that's there, because to turn around and try and sell that house for 250, then cover the fees later, it gets a little bit more difficult. And I think that's why you're seeing the developers then all ask for specials, is because it's difficult for me to sell X amount of house over here and over here if they're the same house, one with specials and one without. I think it takes leadership from the commission. If you're wanting to phase this out based on our bond rating, it's, let's do it so it's in the best interest of the community, which is, let's put a target date way out there. Let's not be in fear of saying, gosh, I wonder what the next commission's going to do. Let's put a target date out there that says, look, guys, in the best interest of the community and our bond rating, to get it down from 47 and take 14% off, let's get that down there so we can fund other projects in case something major happens. Our goal as a city is to get that down to this, and let's do it over a period of time, and then that way we don't live in fear and we stop buying property for overinflated prices.
And if I could add two things, I agree with-
I feel like I'm preaching to them.
I agree with Mr. Welsh's assessment that the typical buyer is going to prefer that house in the scenario of $230,000 purchase price and $20,000 worth of specials. Ironically, that's $230,000 financed for 30 years and $20,000 financed for 15 years, and your monthly payment is actually more. Now, you've got your cost of debt over the life of the loan, but I don't think anybody realizes that's a higher monthly cost to get into that home. And I think I've shared with the commission before, we had a kind of brainstorming meeting with representatives of the lending community, and I didn't use the exact same numbers, but I used a scenario of identical homes on opposite sides of the streets, one, no specials at all, the other, purchase price in specials, but they all washed out. And the lenders were adamant that they couldn't loan on the home with no specials, the reason being they couldn't get an appraisal that would appraise it for that combined value of purchase price and specials, because there's too many examples across the street where the purchase price was that lower purchase price. On the one hand, I understand the logic, on the other hand, they all seem to have the same value to me, but it seems systemic somehow, but we weren't able to come up with a solution that would change the lending practice to make that possible.
Well, and the payment ends up being the same, they do take that in as the debt-to-income ratio of the taxes that are due and the special assessment that's on the property. So whether you can qualify, if they say you only qualify for 230, you can go buy a 230 house, but if it has 2100 in special assessments, by the time they break that down, your monthly payment exceeds what your debt-to-income ratio is, so it doesn't really matter. You can't really, if you can't afford a 250 house, you can't afford a 230 with 2100 in specials because the payment becomes the same. When it all comes down, the payment becomes the same at 230 and 20 and/or 250, if that makes sense. But from the appraisal standpoint, it does get very difficult because the appraisers don't know how much to give for the improvements under the ground, which are called infrastructure.
Yeah, and not to complicate it further, and this predates me in my time here in Salina, but I understand prior county assessor attempted to factor in the infrastructure, the specially-assessed improvements into the assessed value, and that went all the way to state board of tax appeals and was overruled, so.
Which isn't that what we're talking about when Commissioner Hodges wants to assess at full lot price? The only thing that's changed with the ground is the improvements. So my question is, and you open yourself up for that, is unless you put that in the policy that say you do it, is if you strong-arm us into doing that, how could you not take it to the state, which has already had a ruling on it that says, look, improvements cannot be factored into an assessment to raise the value?
Setting aside the strong-arming characterization.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm happy. No, 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 no.
I'm sorry.
Don't speak for me, I'm fine with strong-arming.
Setting that aside, there's probably multiple ways to do it, and there might be one way that works. I mean, recognizing that the assessor could assess it residential if it's used in a certain way, Mr. Bankston could be correct. As part of that agreement, we may have to say that you as the developer and subsequent owners agree not to use it in an agricultural use, which then kind of backs itself into a residential assessment. There's some legal questions to go with that, but there might be a way to get there.
Perfect. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? It's not that scary, just come on. No takers.
I have a couple, just have a couple quick comments. I bought my first house in Salina in 1980, and special assessments were being used at that point and had been used several, because I think when I bought that, there was three or four years left on it. Special assessments seem to work for our community. I mean, every community is different as to how they handle development. I think there have been some issues brought up here that we can look at in the future to see, as a commission, where we fall on those. As of today, I think Mr. Welsh brought up some good points, that we are very low on our inventory of lots that are able to be built on. We have some new, a new business coming to town, I know there's a potential for another. I think we need to, again, once, we'd only have the streets in, I'm guessing we're, what, four months out from having, six months, eight months before we even have lots available to build on? So I think it's kind of a crunch time right now. I think we need to really seriously look at moving forward on this one and probably the next one also. And we get to just talking about that, is if we're going to offer building lots to individuals, if we're hoping for those people to move to our community, or for individuals to move up so others can move into the homes that they would be selling, so.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any action?
I was just going to say, and I just wanted to, there you are. I just wanted to thank Mr. Welsh for coming up and serving as the spokesman and for offering to be a good community partner as we work through some of these issues and how to, I mean, because it's not simple about how we establish not only what's fair for you, but what's fair for the other taxpayers in the community. And, you know, it's my hope that this conversation can continue, so thank you for being willing to, you know, to step up and agree to that.
All right. Any action to be taken?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution Number 19-7750.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 19-7750. Any additional comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. At my fellow commissioners' option, we can take a five-minute recess now, or?
Oh, let's keep going.
Keep going?
Don't you think we'll get less distracted on the next?
That was weighing through my mind, we'll find out shortly. Let's go to 7.3.
Item 7.3, Resolution Number 19-7751, providing for the advisability and authorization of a special improvement district for water, sanitary sewer, street, and drainage improvements in Stone Lake Edition Phase 3A, and authorizing the mayor to execute an improvement district development agreement between the City of Salina and Stone Lake Development LLC.
Back again.
Thank you, yes, back again. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Similar discussion as the last project, this is just a different section in Stone Lake subdivision. Quite a few more lots, though. Stone Lake Development LLC has purchased the whole area, kind of the northwest portion of Stone Lake, and they're proposing this Phase One of their, it's kind of hard to figure out, this is Stone Lake Edition Phase 3A, but it's like the fir-, it's 3A, that's right, this is A. So they'll have a B and a, I'm not sure if a C coming up, but this is just A, and it is 45 lots. And they have worked with us over the last, oh, I guess, few months or so, I guess, they actually came to the city commission June 17th, so this one has gone a little quicker. It does help when the lots, when the property's platted and then they were, they were kind of a help for the emergency access road discussion that we had, so that it actually, theirs went a little quicker, and then their engineer was the same for both projects, so was able to be coordinated. So they came to us in June and then gave us some plans, and they do, in this case, want an improvement district development agreement. I failed to mention the last one, that with the Bradley Stone Lake property number two, the city will actually bid those, bid that project, whereas in Stone Lake Three, Phase 3A, the developer is requesting a development agreement to build that himself, themselves, and then be reimbursed later. So I will stand for questions.
I have a question, because I know we discussed this earlier, and this should probably be for the developers, and I know it's a bad question, but I, because I guess we'd ask, what price range of homes are we, are you trying to develop in this phase? Get you, come up.
We understood it, from the time when we talked in June, they were at 180 to 250, is that right?
Yeah.
Kelly Dunn, Salina, Kansas, thank you for staying and listening to all this. I'm glad Todd got to go first, because I don't have to say so much. Yeah, ours is just a little bit different, our, it is a covenant community, and the covenants in the phases that we will be doing, 3A, 3B, and 3C, there's a little bit of multifamily, which we feel we can do those for around 180 and probably up to 250, I would say would be the price point for the homes we're doing. Our covenants allow us to build as small as a 1,200 square foot house with a two-car garage or bigger. And I think, I think what Todd and Doug are putting in there was the smallest is 1,600 and up from there, so we're in just a little bit different price point where we feel our absorb rate would be a little bit higher.
Do we have multifamily in this phase, or is it in the next phase?
There's five lots in this phase.
Is that those that butt up against Ohio Street then?
Yeah, I think there's a total of 15 in 3A and 3B, but I think there'll be five in 3A, and we've already have a lot of interest in those, so I'm sure there's going to be built on right away.
And I know it's hard to ask you what those price points are going to be, because I know I gave Mr. Welsh a hard time one time, because when he was doing his, he told me he was going to build these for 220 or 230, and of course, by the time he started building them, people wanted this, they wanted that, and he says, I tried to build them, but nobody allowed me build that, you know, so.
Exactly, people want what they want.
So I know it's hard to pinpoint, but it's good to know that you do have the 1,200 square foot minimum, so that'll give us something different.
And I have recently built some townhomes and sold them for that 180 price point, so I don't feel like it'll change a lot. It seems like every week, something goes up, but.
So you have a combination of basement and slabs, then?
Yeah, we can do either or there.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thanks.
Any questions, comments from the public?
John Blanchard, I, just as a follow-up, because I think my comments are the same as on this one as they are before, I think it's irresponsible that you continue to add tax burden to the taxpayers, yet don't even seem interested in recouping the cost once the roads and sewer systems are put in. I do have a quick question, though, and a clarification on something that Mr. Welsh had said earlier. The policy, does that, there was a part, I can't remember if I've read it in the packet or not, the staff report, that said that the applicants are, do not have any outstanding property tax debt in the county. Is that part of the, was that part of the packet, or was I thinking of some other city that?
Well, that is part of the policy, I don't recall whether it's in the packet.
Well, my question would be this, is that, whereas I'm not even sure what the name of this company is, does it refer to the company or does it refer to the principal owners?
Well, actually, I did find it in, I think I found it in the staff report, let me make sure I'm in the right one.
I know Topeka's, when we looked at the policy, Topeka's policy stated not just the company, but principal owners.
The, what's in the, in the staff report is, in this case, condition number three above is met, therefore meets the statute requirements for sufficiency. The Saline County Treasurer has indicated there are no delinquent special assessment taxes on any property owned by the petitioner.
Okay, by the petitioner, so is there certification that each primary owner is, does not own any property taxes?
First, I need to go back and look at the policy to see if it goes to that level.
While you're looking for that, I'll address the question. I think Mr. Welsh had said that something about the value, you know, not taxing the value of the lot, and because the infrastructure goes along with that, or whatever that case may be. The assessor places an assessed value on the land and the improvements when you have a home on it. If you don't have a home on it, you just have a lot. It assesses the land value for the lot. So say your lot is assessed at $36,000, it's not because the infrastructure was $36,000. The infrastructure improved the raw ground. The infrastructure improved the raw ground to be valued at $36,000 because it added value to it, because now it's more, can be used for a more productive use. You don't get assessed your lot in front of your house. Your lot may be worth anywhere from 4,000 to 40,000. You're assessed for the value of the land. And so, I think just the clarification, and what I was talking about, too, and I think you hit on it, was the fact that I'm not talking about when you have a platted, platted piece of ground. I'm talking about when you have improvements that are put in place and dedicated, and they are now in service. We've got to start paying for those as soon as they go in, because we're having everyone else in town subsidize those, and I think that that, as we've talked all along, is not fair. And so, if you need time to get to that, I'll, I.
I have the policy in front of me. It's not jumping out, the particular section about past due specials is not jumping out at me.
Well, I'm talking about property tax. I mean, if I open up the newspaper and I read about property tax delinquencies, am I reading, past due taxes due, am I reading any one of the three principal owners of this organization? And that was my point, so I don't know what.
I believe it is. I believe there's verbiage in the policy. I've yet to find it to, I know there was conversation, we have it as relates to other things, liquor licenses, what have you, about corporate ownership versus the members or individuals, and so I've yet to find the specific language.
Okay. Well, if you can't find it, I don't want to hold things up too much, but I would just urge you to, in the future, maybe look at adding that provision to the specialist, to the special assessment policy, so that we can start collecting on those taxes as soon as possible.
Okay, bring it back to the commission. Mayor Davis, I move we approve Resolution Number 19-7751. Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 19-7751. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. It has been a request that we take a five-minute recess. We'll actually take six minutes. We'll come back at 6:20. My voice, I just hope the prices for Milo are real high this year, because this is my October voice, when that stuff starts to get cut. I want to thank everyone for going through the discussion we just had. Very few policies are perfect when they're created, and sometimes we scrap policies rather than tweak them. This is obviously one which will be tweaked over the years, but we had certainly some good discussion over ways to possibly improve our special assessment policy. So, discussion will be needed in the future, and hopefully we can do it without the pressure of a, of a project being right in front of us at the time we want to make changes. We can put this on the, on the short, long-range planning, just have another discussion to see if we need to tweak it. We can always make something better. We will now move to development business, 8.1.
Item 8.1.
I think, yeah.
Amended application number Z19-5A filed by the Salina City Planning Commission requesting amendment of Sections 42-503 and 42-504 of Salina's sign regulations to clarify what types of signs are and are not allowed in the public right-of-way.
Mr. Andrew.
Talk about not getting something perfect. This is an imperfect effort, but a really good effort to try to identify in our sign code. We have this general prohibition on locating signs in the public right-of-way, but, one, there's exceptions that are created for that, and then, secondly, there may be some things that the community views as desirable being placed in the public right-of-way, that it would be good to have code authority to allow. So, we start with the proposition that no signs are allowed to be located on or in the public right-of-way in any zoning district, and then this draft that's before you basically carves out or sets up eight exceptions, some of which are existing, some of which are new. The two longstanding exceptions we've had is in the downtown area. We have buildings that are built with a zero setback on the public right-of-way. Therefore, if a business puts a projecting sign out on the front of their building, it's going to extend out into the right-of-way. And that is already allowed by code, and so in your draft, the second exception carries that over and allows for, if you take, a classic example would be the marquee sign at the Stiefel Theater. That sign projects out into the public right-of-way over the sidewalk on Santa Fe. That is permitted by code exception already, and this maintains that. In the downtown, another exception to that is the sidewalk in front of most of the businesses on Santa Fe is, again, at, is on public right-of-way, and so this allows a business to go out and put a movable A-frame sign or sandwich board sign out on the public right-of-way in front of their business. A exception that's been going on for years, and was implied but not specifically set out, is signs placed or authorized by the city, county, state, or federal government. And part of the reason for adding that and clarifying that is that there have been, obviously we have traffic control signs and things of that nature, but there's also been signs that have been put out by the city directing travelers to events like the Smoky Hill River Festival. Those signs are placed generally in the public right-of-way. In the past, there've been some citizens say, "Well, how come I can't put my garage sale sign out there, but you can put those signs out there?" Well, those signs are placed or authorized by the city, and a garage sale sign is not. A fourth exception is that we have a number of residential subdivisions around the city. Some have divided medians going into that subdivision, and the developers want to place, say, neighborhood or subdivision entry sign, and that is in the public right-of-way if it's in the median in the street. And exception four authorizes that pursuant to a written license agreement approved by you, the governing body. Exceptions five and six, we've had a case where we have existing banners, where Kansas Wesleyan was able to negotiate terms with Westar, now Evergy, to put colorful banners around the campus on power poles, which are located in the public right-of-way. This exception allows for those vertical banners, and then puts the burden on staff to come up with a banner program that sets out the size and the attachment requirements for that. The same with decorative flags. It's not certain whether, I know our light poles downtown can be modified, but in many communities downtowns, there are flag holders that are attached to the decorative light poles, and there is a program where decorative flags are put out along the public way. Exception six allows for that to occur here in Salina within Business Improvement District Number One, and there's been interest expressed in that. The North Salina Community Development is interested in having a program to attach banners on Ninth Street to mark the entryway into the community under exception five. Exception seven, that has already been addressed at a previous meeting. That exception is during election season, you can put temporary signs out in the unpaid public right-of-way, and you address that through previous action. Then the eighth exception, and there was no sign code authorization for signs that are affixed or attached to bus benches or bus shelters, so what exception eight does is it codifies that. And the, we have presented two options there. I think we indicated in our staff report, there is 178 bus stops on Salina routes for City Go, and of those bus stops, 61 of those 178 are located in residential areas. And there was discussion among the Planning Commission members whether advertising on bus benches should be limited to commercial industrial areas or allowed regardless of zoning district. Where the Planning Commission came down was that they recommended that those locations be limited to the ones that are in commercial or industrial districts. And so, you'll see on the draft that you have attached and indicated in your report, you've been provided with two options related to bus benches and bus shelters. One would limit them to our commercial, industrial, or institutional districts, or the second option would be to allow them in any zoning district. So, one, one way to look at it is there's 178 bus stops. I think by our count, 76 of those bus stops have benches today, and there are 61 of those in residential districts. So, under option two, which is an option that you could act on today, any of those 178 bus stops could have advertising signs. If you followed the recommendation of the Planning Commission, then essentially 117 of the 178 could have advertising signs. The other 61 would not, not be able to have those advertising signs. The other thing we wanted to point out was there was an exception that was added to the ordinance in 1989. That exception allowed for banner signs to be strung over the Santa Fe right-of-way on the crosswalk frames that cross Santa Fe Avenue, and there was an agreement between Salina Downtown, Inc., and the City Commission, where the city obligated its crews to go up and hang signs or banners on, that has not been used for many years, and we have been advised that the new crosswalks are not designed or intended to support those types of banners. So, we did want to point out to you that the existing code had an exception for right-of-way signs strung across the Santa Fe right-of-way on the covered crosswalks, and that was not included in the draft, and there hasn't been real interest in doing that. It seems with changes in technology and ways of notifying people of events, that there hasn't been much interest from SDI about mounting banners across those crosswalks. But we did want to bring that to your attention, that it's in the code today, but it's not in the proposed changes. That would just simply go away without any further action on your part. If you wanted to make sure that got preserved, then we'd have to modify the amendment that's before you today. But the Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on this on October 1st. They extended their public comment period in order to get input from representatives of OCCK. They did hear from them at their September 17th meeting, then received additional information, and they nonetheless voted six to one to recommend adoption of this amendment as drafted, but incorporating the optional language that would not allow advertising signs to be placed on bus benches and bus shelters located in residential districts. So, you would have the option of concurring with their recommendation or modifying their action if you think that the, allowing them in any zoning district is the direction to go. So, I do believe we have representatives of OCCK here, if you'd like to hear from them, but that was the primary policy discussion that the Planning Commission had. The only item where there was not full agreement was on where the bus stop sign should be allowed. So, with that, I'd be open to any questions about the proposed exceptions.
I have a couple of questions, and maybe you can answer some, and then maybe OCCK can also. When we're talking about advertising on these, are we talking about the bench, and then are we also talking about allowing them to advertise on, some of them have a frame? Or what are we talking about, Dean?
Well, if there, if there should be at some point, the frame would be considered the shelter, and there could be other improvements in the future that might have more of a three-sided shelter or something like that. The idea here was to have it open so that they could either be placed on benches or shelters, depending on what the design was at a particular location.
Whether in residential or non-residential, I would, I'm guessing every bench faces the street?
For the most part.
And what was the, I kind of read through the, this, the report from the Planning Commission. What was their objection to the advertising on the residential benches?
Their, their belief was that, was the idea is that other types of advertising signs or commercial signs are not allowed in residential districts, and they thought that by making that distinction, they were preserving those protections for residential areas to keep them looking residential.
Is there any restriction on what can be advertised at the, I mean, have we set anything like saying, you know, you cannot advertise this? It's not allowed to be advertised? I mean, is there?
There are, you have in your packet, there's the guidelines that were adopted for the messaging that could put on the sign, that they're all reviewed by OCCK. I can report that at your next meeting. There's going to be a renewal up for the OCCK agreement, and in working with the city attorney on this, he felt that some of the criteria needed to be sharpened up a little bit for as what messages were and weren't allowed, and then also, he felt like there needed to be an appeals process, that if someone had a message and that message was turned down for a bus bench, that there'd be an opportunity to appeal that to the governing body. So, what you have in your packets is the current criteria for what messages are and are not allowed, and as part of the renewal of OCCK's agreement, the city attorney is currently looking at that and thinks some of that should be clarified in an appeals process set up.
Currently, though, with our relatively unrestricted sign ordinance for residential property, a commercial content sign could be placed in someone's front yard, in that we don't regulate them by content?
We are not regulating by content, but I believe the reference refers to non-commercial speech.
Right. We are able to make a, legally make a distinction as relates to commercial speech and in residential zoning, so it currently provides non-commercial speech.
So, I cannot, even though I'm allowed to have a temporary yard sign or multiple temporary yard signs in my yard, I cannot advertise a sale on coffee at McDonald's on a sign in my front yard. It allows for non-commercial speech, but not commercial speech, and that was the distinction.
Okay.
So, the rationale that the Planning Commission was looking at is that they were, they were looking at the commercial, non-commercial distinction in residential areas, and they chose to essentially say that they didn't want to see commercial advertising on bus benches in residential areas if the residential lots themselves couldn't have commercial signs.
If a school wanted to. If a school wanted to, I'm just going to make this up as I go along. If there's a playground two blocks to the east, would that be considered a commercial message?
That would be a non-commercial message.
I'm just thinking of some types of.
We, as we drive in, the ordinance is currently in effect, we brainstormed lots of scenarios like you're, you're describing.
That could be appropriate, or if there's a neighborhood, like a police boys' club, you know, three blocks away.
Yeah, we, the examples that we were familiar with were kind of charity auctions, charity events, sign up for scouting. There's plenty of not-for-profit, not necessarily commercial, but feels like advertising of some sort, that's probably permissible. It's when you get into the commercial speech. And then, if it's helpful, Dean cited the numbers, and there was a lot of them there. But the, the number of benches in residential neighborhoods is one thing, but currently there's just two that actually contain any advertising on it. And I think they could be considered non-conforming from a zoning standpoint. And by way of our agreement, we could address some timeframe that they could continue before they had to go back to not having advertising on them. That kind of, not only for the advertiser, but for OCCK and allow for some phasing out period.
So you're talking about roofing contractors, siding contractors, the signs like that would be allowed in the residential areas?
So the bench sitting, and I can't remember, let's say just off of Minneapolis Street, on Ohio Streets, considered residential, it would not be eligible for advertising?
Correct. We'd look at what the abutting land is. So if you were, if you had a bus bench on Marymount Road between Iron and Crawford, that would be considered to be a residential area. And if there was a bus bench on Marymount, under the Planning Commission's recommendation, that bench could not have advertising sign on it.
I, I think your, I mean, your question sparked something. I think maybe I know where you were kind of going with that. We have different classes of streets in Salina, correct? I mean, we have arterials, we have, you know. Was there any thought to maybe also linking this to the type of, of, of street that it's, I mean, the, the capacity or the traffic of the street or the class of street that it's on? Because, you know, when you said Minneapolis at Ohio being a, a bus stop, you know, that's a very high visibility, and it's a high, probably, what, the highest traffic, traffic street in Salina? And I just wondered if maybe that, if you could have a caveat that, you know, on, on a, a street that bears a certain amount of traffic or has a certain amount of, a certain classification, that that could be an exception for OCCK?
That, that would be an alternate way of, of looking at it. That was not, um, that was not investigated in any depth, because our, our primary homework item was to identify how many bus stops there were. And then we went through and analyzed the locations of all those bus stops in relation to the adjacent property zoning. But a alternate approach could be, instead of referring to zoning districts, since we are talking about the right-of-way, if you wanted to distinguish between arterial collector and local streets, that would be a defensible way to look at that as well. It's a, it's a policy decision for you as to how you want to approach that.
Something, most of the bus stops are on busier streets, though it is a residential neighborhood. Like Crawford, I don't know if, if it's, like in front of Brookdale, there's a bench.
Mr. Hoppick's example, the, the two examples that we have, one, and both of these are on Santa Fe, and they're in solidly residential areas, but Santa Fe is an arterial street. So it was looked at in terms of the adjacent zoning, but it, it's an equally valid approach to look at it in terms of the classification of the street that the bus stop is located on.
And one of the things that would have, would sway my decision would be whether it's on the bench or if it's, if it's up on the, on the frame, whatever you want to call that. I mean, if it's on the bench, I see it being less intrusive than having something that would be, you know, in a neighborhood on the, I call it the frame, for lack of a better word, so.
And oriented to the street, as in?
What's that?
And oriented to the street.
Yes, yes.
So is there a loophole there then with the real estate signs that are allowed in residential areas? Can you put a real estate advertisement on that bench?
Well, I think we're talking about temporary signs versus permanent signs as well. So most real estate signs are temporary signs where the bunch, benches in the right-of-way become permanent.
And the temporary nature of the real estate sign is a particular parcel of property is for sale. The likely bench advertising is probably just the Realtor or the, the company in general. So that, that probably makes the distinction of what's permissible or not.
This is just a photograph of an existing, it's an existing bus bench sign.
If I owned XYZ Realty and I wanted to buy a bunch, a bus bench, it's getting late, advertising, and it were permissible in a residential area, then, you know, on that bus stop, it could be X, XYZ Real Estate or something like that. I mean, as long as it fits within the parameters of what you've.
Sure. And I'm working from memory, but I, I know we had conversation about what constitutes a real estate sign and is it listing a property for sale. So it's one thing to say it's a real estate sign that lists the, the property for sale. It's another thing to say it's an advertising sign for a Realtor. And that might be the distinction between.
If you look at that sign, I believe it's a Millwood Realty sign, and it's attached to that bench. And if you took the grassy area north or south of that bench, and you put a Millwood Realty, Real Estate For Sale sign in that location, city code enforcement would come along and remove it because you can't put a for-sale sign in the public right-of-way. So what, what we're, that was part of the reason for creating and trying to codify this exception is that for enforceability and just for an understanding of the basis, that the code says, signs authorized by the city to be permanently affixed on bus benches. It doesn't have to include shelters. We just found that in, in most of the other ordinances reviewed, it allowed for it on bunch of bus benches or shelters. But you're not, you're not obliged to include shelters if you want to limit it to benches. But it was just written that way to give the most flexibility to each bus stop location because we understand that in the future, there could be improvements that might involve three-sided shelters or other things. But the, um, the distinction we wanted to make is that the, a freestanding real estate sign put five feet north or south of that bench would not be permitted under the city's sign code. So this, this exception would codify the authority for transit providers to have signs on their bus benches or shelters or other facilities. It also requires that that contractor, that that be done through pursuant to a written agreement between the city and the contractor. And that is what we have in place with OCCK. We don't have that in place with, or wouldn't have it with any, anyone else, quite likely. So it's, it's really a question, a policy question for you as to where. And then the agreement that will come before you for renewal of the contract with OCCK will address some of the things like the message content, the size, the placement, those types of things. This is primarily the where within the public right-of-way on benches only and in any location or limited to just commercial and industrial zoned locations.
I'd kind of like to hear the, from OCCK and their, their stance, and then also the financial impact that this program has on their.
Hi, Michelle Griffin, Transportation Director, OCCK. So we do have a few comments. So first of all, Pat wore out, so he had to leave. So he, he kind of has all the background history information on this. What I do know was that the bench advertising was requested by the Salina City Commission in 2014 to supplement our budget. So that was not our request, that was your previous, you's request. And that was put into place in August of 2014. And it's our understanding that current city staff was unaware of the existence of that resolution when this was all brought up. We did attend the September 17 Planning Commission, and we did meet with staff right before that meeting. That was kind of the first that we knew that we had something that we needed to work on. And they did provide us with a, a map so we could look at the different zoning, because we haven't been concerned with the zoning. We've just been concerned with picking people up, getting them where they need to go. We did miss the October 1 Planning Commission meeting. I'm not sure what happened there. We weren't really notified of that meeting, slipped our minds that we needed to go, so we were not there. It's evident from the minutes that we need to go back and address some things with the Planning Commission about why we exist, how we exist, and the different questions that they asked about CityGo. So we do have 178 total stops. 10 of those have shelters, 75 have benches. Of those 75, 15 have advertising on them. 25 cannot have advertising, or they have small plaques already in place. Of the 178, 60 are residential. However, when you go through and look at our list, and we have books with pictures of all the stops, 31 of those are actually on businesses. So like the Fairdale and Crawford is in front of Brookdale, that's zoned residential, but it's actually on a business property, which is a majority of what those are. So of those 67, benches cannot have anything because they were either donated or have small plaques on them. And we have three ads in residential areas. So we have one at Martin Luther King Childcare, it's on their property. Salina Family Healthcare is that advertiser. The second one is at Salvation Army, which is right next door, on their property. Heartland Early Education is that advertiser. And then at Brookdale on East Crawford, we advertise 81 Connection. And then 93 stops out of the 178 don't have benches, they're just signs, don't have anything. So we do have some recommendations. And actually, I have a copy of our contract that we run with all of those ads. So we do look at all of them. Right in there, it says that they're not used to promote political, religious, personal, alcohol, tobacco, bias, slanderous, discriminatory, or inappropriate propaganda. And I would also say that this new agreement that's coming out next Monday, this is the first that we've heard, that there are changes to what we're supposed to do for ads and the appeals process. So that's something brand new to us, we didn't know anything about it. We're going to have to reschedule meetings that we had so we can come here and talk about that. So our recommendations would be to allow us to use all of the bench locations. Like you were mentioning, those bench ads are on the fronts, they're facing the streets. They're, if they are in residential areas, they're still facing the streets. The traffic on the front, on the street side sees that advertising, not the residential houses that are on the backside. We'd also like to address the fact that the staff didn't know about the resolution that we had in effect from 2014. I don't know how we address that, to make sure that everybody's on the same page with that. And then that we would still, even though we are making progress with the new city staff and us being new, that we're notified about all of these things in advance so that we can prepare. So if you, I have, if you have questions, we've got information that we can share.
So basically, you've not met with the Planning Commission?
We did on, we met with them on September 17th, but that was like the very first day. We found out about that in the morning and showed up in the afternoon. And that was basically their fact-finding, where they told us to, that the city was going to give us a map with all of the zoning so we could look at the benches and figure out what was where.
So I will make a point of clarification that.
I'm just.
One of the reasons this kind of all came to be is based on changes from federal level related to signage, is we constantly get requests to put signs in the right-of-way, whether it's benches for buses or flags on posts. And we had no mechanism in which to do that. So we went and looked and worked with legal staff to figure out how, how can we do that? Whether it's for the downtown, whether it's for the bus benches. And what we found is we had to reorient code and to kind of create these guidelines. Whether we had an agreement or not with OCCK, whether staff knew or not, did not know, it still didn't create the legal mechanism in which to allow this. So by creating this change in code and creating the mechanism which says, we accept guidelines through that contract, it starts to create the system in which we can allow it. So, and they are also members of the downtown stakeholder committee that actually was one of the things that started talking about signs in right-of-way, and that's what got this conversation going. So I don't think there was any intent to leave them out of the conversation. And I think what I'm hearing is, you know, we can better coordinate those meetings, but we've been trying to have this conversation throughout this process.
So is there a resolution out there?
Yeah, I think it's.
Yes. But as Lauren's saying, that resolution predates kind of the regulations we're now trying to get our codes to sync up with. So we'll have an opportunity to kind of bring all this together going forward.
No, I think the point that she was trying to make, though, is that resolution said that the commission asked them to do this to help supplement their, you know, the monies for whatever they were, you know, for their budget.
Yeah, and I don't think that.
Yeah, I don't think this precludes that.
We're not disagreeing with the benches being there, we just want to legalize them. And right now, we can't legalize the signs because they're contrary to what our code says. Our code says, no signs in the right-of-way, whether they're on a bench or not. So the purpose of the ordinance was never to say, we don't want you guys to advertise on the benches, we just got to figure out how to legalize them.
Since they didn't get the sort of input they wanted with the Planning Commission, wouldn't it be sensible to, just to refer it back to the Planning Commission so they can hear their presentation? I think it makes a lot of sense to me to at least open it up to arterial streets. And, uh, I kind of wouldn't want to see advertising on the back of the benches in a residential area, but I don't see a problem with the street facing. So I, I think it just maybe needs another hearing back at that level.
It sounds reasonable.
Ms. Griffin, how much, I, I could do the math, but you don't want me doing the math? How much revenue, do you have any idea that you?
Not a lot. The signs are $400 a year.
Okay.
And is that an annual contract then?
Mm-hmm.
And then you monitor the, the quality of the sign? I mean, if, if it starts to deteriorate, then you can request it to be removed or replaced?
We do regular inspections of all of our bus stops.
Is that revenue lumped in with, like, what you collect for fairs? Is it that kind of revenue?
Um, I'm not sure where it goes in our budget. It's not a lot, so it probably does get lumped in with everything else. There's not a specific purpose that it's held out for, that I'm aware, that I'm aware of. Pat may have a different answer.
So how many advertisements do you have out there now, did you say?
15.
15.
And four of those are ours, so 11.
How much does it cost if someone wants to donate a shelter? Or the cost of?
Um, I don't know, I didn't bring seven, $7,000 for a shelter.
And then you put a little plaque on it, or usually?
We can do that, yes.
And I think just something Commissioner Hoppick mentioned before, if, if, you know, we're going to have Planning Commission take another look at this. To me, you know, a bench advertisement, the way that you've done them historically is completely a different conversation than a frame advertisement that may be on, well, one, two, three, four, five, six sides potentially, like in a residential area, because, you know, just my own personal point of view, I don't see a problem with these, you know, along arterial or collector streets. But, you know, I wouldn't want to see really large-scale advertisements in a residential area. So that might be another thing to, to take a look at. Breaking that up.
Well, great ideas. Can we get, I'm sorry, before we do that, any comments from the public here?
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, John Blanchard, 250 South 9th Street. I would just like to back up what she said about it being the idea of the commission at the time. We were, as you know, OCCK comes early in the budget process. In 2014, and Rod was there at that time, he was there, he's familiar with it. I think, Greg, you're probably very familiar with it, Mike as well, and I don't know, maybe even Dean. But I know it was before you were on the commission. know it was before you were on the commission, Mayor, because it was, like I say, about May 2014. But they did. They came to us with, you know, their operational budgets were under stress, and that's understandable. And I think probably Downtown was at the same time. And you might have been on Downtown at that time. And it was the recommendation of the city commission, because we're saying, listen, we're trying to keep our costs in line. And I remember, I might have been the one that says, "Is there any other revenue streams that you guys have that you can kind of help out?" And they stepped up to the plate, and they did it. I know the main concern at the time was that we were like, we got to make sure that there are standards in place, so that they're tastefully done, okay? Now, the thing with the whole temporary sign thing, the horse is out of the barn in residential neighborhood. Anything goes on some of these things, okay? But I can tell you, as I drive around town, I have never seen a CityGo advertisement that stuck. I mean, maybe you need to advertise better, but none of them caught my attention. (Laughter) And I know they should, but I mean, I think they're very tastefully done. We also need to recognize that not just the level of street, but a lot of the neighborhoods where those benches are located are higher-density neighborhoods. And that's because the transportation system supports that kind of user. And so we're not talking about trying to preserve a residential neighborhood out on St. Andrews, or whatever that thing is, or Magnolia Hills, or wherever. I mean, we're not, you know, we don't have bus stops there. So being a strong supporter of North Salina, of core neighborhoods, of those areas, and caring about, you know, the environmental design of the community, I think they do a great job. Not only did we ask them to do something, they did it. But they have a history of really keeping their word that they're going to be very tastefully done. I think with four votes, and the parliamentarian may be able to correct me, I think this is an easy one. I would strongly support that your request, or that you pass an action that allows the use of the CityGo sign with the regulations that need to be put into place in all zones. Thank you.
Any comments up here, or suggestions for action? Let's start with the words, "I move."
When does the Planning Commission meet again?
Their next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, November 5th.
Other than tomorrow.
Well, they do meet tomorrow?
Yeah, it'd be, we can turn it around that quick. They don't meet tomorrow.
I don't see any problem with the signs on them, you know, on the front of them. I mean, I think we ought to go ahead and...
Are you making a motion?
Well, I can do that.
My only thing is, I respect the Planning Commission, and I don't disagree. I mean, I have no problem with it, as long as it's on the bench, facing the street. I just kind of, and the fact that Planning Commission didn't get to have the full conversation with OCCK, I kind of like for them to be able to be involved in that. I could go either way, so.
Yeah, well, they've carried the full conversation. I think we should refer it back to them. But I think the important piece is for them to hear OCCK's concerns. It seems to me that's the lacking part. So I believe that option three allows us to direct them to take a different approach, and work with the staff and with OCCK on the solution to the bench advertising.
And option two is to go ahead and...
Well, and I think I would direct staff also, if it goes back to Planning Commission, to take back our concerns about making sure that the signs are on the bench themselves, and not on the shelter, and so on and so forth. So that would, I mean, I think, and so...
So does option two, would that give the permission to put it on, is that what we're looking at, then? If option two will give permission to put them on the front of all of the benches?
No, we need, I think what we need to do is, number three would be, I'm going to make a motion.
That would be my feeling. I can make a motion.
Mayor Davis, I move the city commission, send this item back to the Planning Commission, and direct them to take, to, I don't want to say "take a different approach," but to take into consideration the comments made by the commission, and work with staff on changes to the proposed code amendment. Does that make enough sense?
Might need a point of clarification possibly, having to do with the point you made earlier in the conversation about replacement of the signs. I'm looking to Dean and to Lauren as to what degree of specificity you think the Planning Commission might wish to have. "Specs" totally refers to providing direction. If there is a particular issue, I'd want to...
Well, I didn't put it in my motion. That's why I put in there to take our discussion back to the Planning Commission, and then that.
Just real quick, I'll second that, so that we can, because I had a couple of questions myself. Just basically, in terms of, is that something that, you know, just talking about the advertising on the bench backs, is that something that is specified in the ordinance? Or is it something that's specified in the operating agreement with OCCK? In terms of making it specific in their operating agreement about, you know, any restrictions or...
Yes, that makes sense, yeah.
And that's my question, Jim. Probably is part of that discussion, is if, what I'm understanding, you'd like to go back and have that discussion with the Planning Commission, have OCCK more involved in that conversation, and look at the type of road, and the level of impact of the signage, the type of essentially apparatus that the sign is placed on, a bench verse, you know, a shelter. And I think depending on the discussion you all have, then their contract would then reflect that, that, you know, if code is, and the discussion is, like, only benches get advertising in residential areas, I would assume, I'm looking to Greg, that those things would start to mirror each other.
True. I just wanted to be sure.
I expected that Commissioner Hoppe's approach to the motion was intentional, but I wanted just to be sure that that worked, as you anticipated, going back to the Planning Commission. It's certainly fine with me either way. I just wanted to be sure that...
So this would be referring to benches only in the right-of-way, for which OCCK would be the only one to have the exception operating agreement to place benches there? Otherwise, every time Dick and Howard would get a bench, and put it in the right-of-way, and put a sign on it?
Well, no. See, and that kind of just goes back to the whole purpose of this ordinance. It's not, we would have an agreement with OCCK that allows them to put these things in the right-of-way. Right now, we're making the direction on what those things are. No different than, you know, Dean talked to having guidelines for other types of signage. So if you want to put banners up on light poles, we would have guidelines for that. So each one of those is particular, and they have to follow those guidelines. The contract, essentially, we have OCCK's, those adopted guidelines.
Okay.
I'm sorry. My question for staff, then, is if we hold this, is this going to hold up our funding contract?
That's what I was just going to ask.
Because I also have a deadline with KDOT for my next fiscal year, that I have to have this letter from the city with my funding amount.
And that may dovetail with, if we have very specific suggestions that we're sending back to the Planning Commission, if I was on the receiving end of that, I would take that as saying, "Don't send it back to me until you have these things in it," in which case I would ask if there are four votes here to agree on those and be done with it.
Mr. Mayor, I guess, point of clarification, I guess maybe I'm not understanding exactly what OCCK, maybe, I understand frustration not working with the Planning Commission enough, but what would make this okay for you guys? Is it, you want residential signage, not residential signage? Because we have this in front of us right now, that if that's a concern, the city commission can hear that conversation.
I mean, I think we want residential signage. We want the ability to be able to do that, to be able to raise funds as we need to.
You want it on benches and on shelters?
Yes.
In all locations, or by street classification?
It would be easier for me if I could just do all locations. I mean, I have a pretty minimal staff outside of drivers.
Yeah, we could provide you a map of the streets.
Just one clarification. In the shelter, is it on the bench in the shelter, or on the shelter frame itself?
We could do either one, because those shelters are glass, or we could do an ad on a bench.
I have an issue with advertising on the shelter in a residential area.
I do, too. I'd go with a bench, but I'd...
And I don't know that we have any shelters in residential areas.
But you could someday.
I do, too. But we could address that at a future time.
We would have to have a pretty substantial area to put in a shelter. So we have a shelter at DCF, which is commercial, Elmore Center, Salina.
Are there any shelters that don't have benches?
No, they would all have benches. Salina Regional Parking Garage, Salina Family Healthcare, 7th and Walnut, Walmart, Faith Drive, Sunset Dillon's, 9th and Hamilton, and Kansas Wesleyan, by their crosswalk, that's a shelter that they put up.
Well, we have a motion on the floor. The question would be to decide if we...
How will this affect your funding? I mean...
Well, if this is part of our agreement, we'll have to...
Yeah, I think we can process the funding agreement next Monday, and just anticipate that this will follow. We were trying to synchronize them, but if the timing is such that that's urgent, we can accommodate that.
I mean, this is additional funding. I don't think will affect our decision.
What she's referring to is, she needs a letter of support from the city for her KDOT funding for the operation.
I don't see that being an issue.
So I think we can separate these and have to do that.
Essentially, I mean, maybe the option three is on buses, shelters, and, sorry, my iPad died, so, you know, it's on shelters, it's on benches, in all zoning districts except within residential districts, only on benches. So it would allow for residential areas to still have some advertising, but on benches only, no shelters.
And this is an ordinance, so I'll have to come back to you for a second reading. So you give us direction, we can refine the language. I think, one of the questions, though, is whether you want to make the decision at the governing body level, or whether you want to refer it back to the Planning Commission.
The Planning Commission wasn't divided on that, correct, Dean?
There was one planning issue, and five, they should be allowed in any zoning district, and the majority felt that they should be allowed only in commercial and industrial.
Well, and I think we kind of highlighted about the difficulty of distinguishing, like, a residential district if we've got, you know, a street like Ohio, that's a residential district, but it's also an arterial or whatever. And Jim could probably speak to the volumes of traffic on the different roadways, but...
Are there shelters that have advertisements on the shelter frame? I mean, I drive past them every day, and I just can't, so...
They're only on the benches currently themselves, not the shelter on the backside.
Right. So we don't need a special designation of advertising on the shelter, because that's not offered, I'm assuming? It's only offered on the benches, correct?
We try to keep it on the benches alone, because it's easier to affix to the benches if you're a fixed...
I'm sorry.
It's easier, sorry, Claire Mullen, it's easier to affix to the bench rather than to the glass shelter, because with the fixtures, how the signs are made, there's holes placed on them that are then secured to the benches. If you're securing it to the glass, there's nothing really to wrap that around. With the benches, it has the rungs that we're able to affix it to.
I don't want to micromanage, but I personally don't like the idea of it being on the actual shelter, but...
I would just, I would just be concerned if you got to a point in the sophistication of your advertising, if you started doing, like, vinyl wraps that could conceivably wrap all the glass. And I would just, not in, you know, a residential.
So just to move this along, do we want to take action? Well, there is a motion.
There's a motion, a second.
We have to take action, anyway.
I just did want to clarify one item. If you look at the rest of the language in the draft, it refers to the fact that these are allowed through by a private contractor, but they have to be allowed pursuant to an agreement between the city and the contractor. The agreement shall be in writing, and shall specify the allowable message content, size, placement, illumination, design, material for each of the signs, so as to minimize the visual impacts of such signs on the general public and surrounding properties. So the purpose of the text amendment was to codify or authorize the ability to have signs in the right-of-way on bus benches. They don't have to be on shelters or other facilities, if you don't want them to be. But it's the agreement between the city commission and the transportation provider that's going to, the current agreement says that the signs must conform to the following standards: 15-inch height, 48-inch width, must be of durable quality plexiglass material. CityGo will secure the ad on the bench. So all of those types of things are specified in the agreement, and we did not attempt to specify those in the ordinance. It would not make a lot of sense to me to have an ordinance that allowed them on shelters and other facilities, if you didn't want them to be. But you could have a situation where the ordinance reads what it does, and through the agreement with OCCK, you limit it to benches. But if the goal is to not allow them on anything but benches, the draft that's before you could be modified for second reading pretty easily to eliminate all references to anything but benches.
So if the majority wanted to allow the signage in all areas, including the residential, then we could cure the rest of it with the agreement with OCCK.
If you wanted to authorize them in any zoning district in the city, but limit them to bus benches only, then it's just a matter of striking some of the language relating to shelters and other facilities from the text.
So if there's a majority sent in to that, there would have to be withdrawal of the motion. If not, we need to act on the motion. Okay, it's been moved and...
Was it seconded?
Seconded. It's been so long ago, I almost forgot what was moved. Which number was it?
Three.
Three, okay. Two, send this back to the Planning Commission, and direct them to take a different approach, and work with staff on major changes to the proposed code amendment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion carries three to two. Okay. And, we have some other business. I just wanted to bring up something under other business, unless another commissioner has...
I've got something I need to, too, so.
After you, sir.
I just wanted to apologize to the, some of the participants, and some of the citizens of Salina for the softball games that we had out at the Bill Burke Park this weekend. I had several emails complaining about the restrooms, about how they were not taken care of. They were dirty, they were disgusting. And, you know, I feel these teams, they pay good money to come to town to play in our facilities, and that we should, we need to take care of those facilities, and make sure they're in good shape when they get there, so that they have, you know, clean restroom facilities. So again, I'd like to apologize for the teams that came in and, you know, encountered these. And hopefully, this won't happen again, and we can keep these teams coming to town.
Commissioner Hay and I had an opportunity to speak before the study session. I think that's a reasonable expectation, and I'm not disagreeing. I haven't had an opportunity to find out what the scheduling was, or what the issue might have been, but we'll see if we can't find out what the cause was and solve it.
All right. And I guess the issue I wanted to bring up, not for action today, but would be to discuss formally having the Solid Waste Committee, well, I hate to use the word investigate, but assess Salina's aptitude or attitude towards taking action towards plastic bags. I'm intentionally using the B-A-N word out of this, because that seems to polarize people and put them on the defensive. But to come up with a reasonable, ecologically sound approach to the use of plastic flexible containers, otherwise, previously known as bags, because there are situations where they are needed. But there's, I think there's action that we can take to minimize their ending up damaging our environment, and tying up the refuse system, trying to track them down. I think it's an issue of, you know, what is this ... issue of, of, you know, what does this city want to be known for? And if, we don't want to be, well, if we do want to be known as a city that tackled a plastic bag problem, we need to start somewhere, and I would hope the Solid Waste Committee would have the, the time and the energy, and I don't know what they'll need as far as their technical or administrative resources to do this, but to at least get that conversation started somewhere.
So, did I understand you say you didn't want to take action on that tonight?
Well, I don't know, other than, because it's not an agenda item, if, if we're allowed to direct staff to send that issue to Solid Waste, the actual technical, how to do that, I must admit, right now, I don't know, so...
I agree, I agree 100%.
Looking for assistance in that, in that regard.
Well, there's a parliamentary question, which I think Greg can answer, and, and I think there probably is some value for us to give you a little bit, bit of background about the Solid Waste Committee and its role, and how it was formed, and kind of, and the breadth of its purpose. So, there might be value in us providing that background, and by way of a staff report as an action item for you at a, at an upcoming date, and then you could take action.
The action I'm anticipating would be very short, and, and I guess I would move to have it placed on next week's agenda. Not burning you with, you know, the task that you would do if we were going to draft an ordinance next week, but just to get a conversation started.
Sure.
The resolution on the sanitation plan is next week, and there's history in the blue sheet that discusses the role and purpose of the Solid Waste Committee already. It discusses the last time plastic bags were brought before you in the study session, so it would be relatively easy as part of that discussion for you to direct us to look into that further.
I was looking through past presentations this morning, looking for something else, and I stumbled upon the presentation that Ms. Driscoll gave to us about how you, how you go about implementing something major like this, and of course, got sidetracked. So I looked at it again in terms of what steps you need to start at before, you know, you start, I don't know, you don't, you don't come up with a plan first, you get input to help you develop the plan, so it'll be embraced by the community as, as opposed to a top-down, you know, approach. And, you know, it might, it might be good to, to take another look at what Ms. Driscoll had laid out, and then it kind of struck me that, and this is way off topic, but it kind of related to, like, Centennial Park too, because it was like, after I read that, I saw, I see why it's getting some hangups now. We kind of did, that kind of went a little bit out of sequence, to have, you know, like, to get input on the front end. But I, I'd be open to having that conversation if we've got something for, on Solid Waste at next Monday's meeting.
I forgot that we did, but we do.
And you solved the parliamentary matter by virtue of suggesting next week. It's a 4-1 vote to, to consider it as an item today, but a majority vote for next week.
In that case, the question to be voted on would be to add a discussion regarding Salina's policy towards plastic bags on next week's agenda.
Second.
Just want to make sure everyone knew the motion. So now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five oh. Thank you. Any other, other business, other than our real other business?
Okay, I'm up. And you said 20 minutes?
Yes, please.
I moved that the City Commission recess into executive session for 20 minutes to discuss with legal counsel the subject of the status of the KDHE issued consent agreement and final order, CAFO, pending mediation in the Schilling environmental matter based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 757319B2. The open meeting will resume in this room at...
7:44.
7:44 PM. So, yeah, 7:44 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Not entertaining any discussion on this, because we got no choice.
Yes, we do anticipate action.
All right. All in favor of recessing into executive session for 20 minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, calling the meeting back into regular session. We have had discussion at the executive session level regarding the negotiations for the cleanup of the Schilling Air Force Base site, and to not confuse anyone, I'll ask the city manager to explain just the, the background behind...
I'll do my best not to confuse, and Greg may have to clarify, but, Mayor and Commissioners, as you know, we have a consent agreement and final order that was negotiated and has been in place for quite some time, and we've completed remedial investigation and feasibility study, and KDHE's also completed their corrective action decision. And so, some of the provisions of the CAFO, the corrective agreement and final order, kind of contemplate what might unwind that, that agreement, and impose some timeframes, recognizing we're going into mediation with the Corps of Engineers, and we felt it was best to request of the Kansas Department of Health and Environment that the CAFO remain in effect, and, and provide that they do not require any quarterly reporting or pass-through of any costs, but we just kind of forego any time clock related to the CAFO, and that it stay in effect. So, I feel like that's probably the best move at this point, as we prepare for mediation, and just keep that option open to us.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Any action to be taken by staff?
Mayor Davis, I move that the City of Salina concur with the request of the Salina public entities, that the KDHE agree to amend its consent agreement and final order, CAFO, pending mediation with the United States, and assent to foregoing quarterly reporting requirements, and holding KDHE oversight costs in abeyance until an amendment of the CAFO is negotiated and entered.
Second. The city clerk have that? Any further discussion? Yep, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing.
Make a motion, adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sounds like it's unanimous.